Twenty twenty-two Winchester Planning Board. You are being recorded via Zoom as well as by Windcamp. Thank you, Windcamp. I'll get to our roll call in a second, but we have with us this evening Nancy Polcari, our recording secretary, Brian Sekelly, our town planner, and Brian Mantor, our town engineer, has left us for just a brief moment. He'll be back at nine-ten when we talk about the ZVA permits. So, why don't I do a roll call vote? So everyone is officially noted as present. Nick?
Here.
Kurt?
Present.
Yi Ching?
Present.
Sally? Muted.
Present.
And Diab Juris is present as well. Thank you all very much. So, um, this evening, oh, I should note to everyone out in TV land that you can reach the planning board at any time via email at planningboard@winchester.us and that email goes to every member of the planning board and the town planner. We get to see everything. So, uh, this evening, we are going to have our standard updates at the beginning. We will approve some minutes. Every year, we reassess what our goals are, also our liaisons with other boards, uh, as well as our ex officio members slash representatives. We'll be doing that at seven fifteen. At eight-ten, we will be hearing from, uh, three consultant groups. We will be interviewing them to see which of them we would like to help us with the next phase of the North Main Street revitalization. At nine-ten, we have two ZVA permits to review. And at nine-thirty, we all get to go to bed. So why don't we start? Uh, Brian, if you want to start us off with some updates?
Sure, um, I'll, uh, talk a little bit about the MBTA community zoning change that occurred January of twenty-twenty-one. So there's a couple of deadlines that are coming up. I'm trying to schedule this April meeting in front of the select board. That's part of being compliant for this year of twenty-twenty-two. If we're not compliant this year of twenty-twenty-two, we would not be able to apply for several grants, some of which were not even qualified to apply for in the first place, such as the Housing Choice Grant. But there are other grants such as Mass Works that typically we have not applied for in the past, and there's really no plan to apply for this year, but we would still like to be compliant with this law. Uh, part of that is being having a public info session with the select board before May second. We're trying to make that happen before town meeting, but it is, it's, it's proving to be difficult with all the scheduling with just a lot of, uh, with this, not, not with this, not specifically with the select board, but just scheduling in general around town meeting. Because there's a lot of meetings leading up this month, uh, for a lot of boards and committees. So I have been meeting, uh, as of today, I met with, uh, Diab and the Chair of the Housing Partnership Board, John Serbeer, to talk a little bit about, um, about this. We, the planning board is going to be having, uh, we are going to talk about this as well sometime in April. And there's a, a lot of communities, uh, that are, uh, struggling to try to even come close to meeting some of these density requirements that would be, that are required, uh, only if you want to apply for these grants. So it's not like there's a penalty if you don't, if you don't do this. But there's potential, a lot of money left on the table. Okay, that's it for MBTA. Does anyone have any quick questions, I guess, about, about that, uh, before, before we kind of keep moving? Yeah, Yi Ching?
Well, not, not about that one, but related to MBTA. I'm just curious about what's going on with the, with the MBTA renovations.
Sure, um, so, uh, Laraway and the Laraway parking lot, as well as the Waterfield parking lot, are either, I believe they're going to be closed either very soon or already closed. And they're going to be starting, uh, starting, uh, work, um, in April, uh, in earnest. So that, that you're going to be, you're seeing a lot of activity out there in April. But yeah, the, the, the change for, for, for town mainly is the, the parking situation.
As I, they had been working on it all since twenty-twenty, but, um, I guess not.
Well, there, there was not much work over the winter, um, and the, and those parking lots were still open, and now they're gonna close.
So there, we're gonna have one, um, MBTA at Wedgemere and then kind of half parking lot because they're using it for EverSource stuff.
Um, that is correct, yep.
Yikes.
I guess I'll stop there, uh, just in the essence of time. Uh, Diab, I don't know if there was any other, any other things you wanted me to specifically talk about?
No, I was gonna bring something up real quick, um, which is that the, uh, we, we will be meeting with FinCom this Thursday to talk about our budget. Um, and I don't know exactly which time, uh, in the FinCom's meeting that we will be up. We had a meeting with a rep from FinCom yesterday to fill them in and, uh, we'll be going forward. I will be making a, um, I will make a, be making our arguments for a, um, Assistant Town Planner. Uh, we all, I think, understand that that's not going to happen this year. Um, but I will still be making the first of many years' worth of arguments just to let them know that this is something that we really want. We did, uh, the, the board may recall that we have been, we talked about some funds left over from the master plan. Grants that were given or distributions given us by town meeting. And we thought that we could use those towards some of our Main Street, North Main Street or Holton Street, um, studies. Um, Brian reviewed the wording that, um, town meeting that was in the articles before town meeting. And it does not look like we can use them for anything after the master plan. They were about um, preparation and finishing the master plan. So those monies will have to be returned to the town budget. And I believe that we will have to do that via an article at town meeting to close out the, uh, I'm not completely certain about that, Brian.
Yeah, I, I don't believe that is the case, but, but, but yeah, it is very clear in terms of what the money was. The first appropriation was for, um, the first appropriation was for, uh, preparing the master plan, and the second appropriation was for finalizing the master plan. So it, um, the controller and the Assistant Town Manager felt that was extremely clear, and I agreed.
The wording was unfortunately very clear. Uh, so we will return those monies to the general fund. And we will work without them. Uh, one thing that did come up in the, uh, the budget, the that we actually, that we passed, that we requested, we requested, I believe, thirty or thirty-five thousand for professional services. Um, and we also requested a Assistant Town Planner. Uh, the Town Manager did not put in the Assistant Town Planner, but she bumped up our professional services to forty-five K. So there is a little bit of extra money that we will be able to use for the Holton Street and North Main Street, um, things next fiscal year. So, um, we, we, we were hoping we had, I think, like eighteen K or something left over that we were hoping to use. So we will still have, I think we'll have enough money to, to do what we need to do. And that's it. I'm all done.
Uh, Diab, what was the date of the FinCom meeting that you mentioned, the Tuesday?
It will be this Thursday evening. And, uh, it's, uh, I don't have the actual Zoom link. I think it's, uh, it's on, it's on the government calendar. And I don't know that it will be exact, I think they start at seven or seven-thirty, but, um, I haven't been told exactly when we're up.
Okay, and, uh, we're, uh, the entire board will, is expected to be there, is that correct?
No, 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 you're not. This is only if you, if you want to do something else on your Thursday evening. You're welcome to attend, but.
But you'll, you, what I'm asking is, uh, this is something that you'll attend.
I will, I will attend on behalf of the board.
Okay.
And, and make my pleas. And, uh, so that's it. Um, so that's.
I just have one question.
Yeah, Sally.
Um, Brian, you were gonna set up a time for me and you, um, and Diab to move forward on getting those master plan implementation committee next steps mode activated. Um, so can we get that scheduled?
Yeah, that's a ball drop on my, on my end there, Sally. Um, I was supposed to schedule that.
Okay. I, I will not be available until next week for that, so, um, just heads up on that. Um, okay, so, uh, next on our agenda is now we're actually on time. Let me go exit full screen here. So next on our agenda is to, uh, look at our goals, liaisons, and, um, representatives. And, uh, Brian, if you could share your screen again and pop up the liaison list. I think that might be the easiest to deal with.
Yep, I will do that. Do you want to mention that, um, the minutes that we were gonna approve?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yes, we do have minutes to approve. Um, and one of the minutes is for executive session. And Nancy Polcari, our recording secretary, uh, before you came on, um, said that there are, there are other minute, executive session minutes coming up. And that for sake of efficiency, we should probably just batch those all together in a single executive session. So we'll put off the approval of the executive session minutes. But we will go ahead and approve these, so. Let's see, we have enough people here who were at that meeting. So, uh, are there any comments on the, uh, meeting minutes for Tuesday, March first, twenty-twenty-two?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Um, on page three, the second bullet point, um, we're talking about the ten to fifteen-year goal. Um, I think we should add that, uh, ten to fifteen-year goal to build two hundred and fifty units. Um, and then, um, where it says permitted is closer to fifty, including Fells and Waterfield. I feel like that's misleading because Waterfield has not been permitted.
Yeah, I would agree. Fells Hardware, six fifty-four.
Oh, six fifty-four main, okay.
And maybe, maybe we should, uh, rewrite Fells as six fifty-four main, just so the those reading the notes knows what we're talking about.
Yeah, and, yeah, and like Yi Ching said, Waterfield's not permitted yet.
Yeah, okay.
So that was one. And then the following, um, at the end of this, this same page, the PB questions with Mr. Chen's answers. Um, the last bullet point says some of the facades help mitigate the feel of the height and some do not. Because of the height and mass, this building will be visible from everywhere. It is a solid one-piece structure, which is what mylethick means. And I believe that was a Sally, that was Sally's comment, and it, it's a little bit confusing here because it looks like it's Mr. Chen's. So if, if we could add.
Comment with no answer.
Right, so that was Sally's comment. So I would, I would add that rather than.
Yeah, just take it out of PB questions with Mr. Chen's answer and just say, you know, board member comment. Or something, I just, he didn't answer it.
Okay, so we can, um, make that edit. Uh, any other edits?
I had something on the bottom of page two. I'm sorry, Yi Ching, I'll wait. Are you done?
I think I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, on the bottom of page two, the very, um, boat, the very last sentence of the last bullet, if the building becomes smaller, it will be less attractive. And I went back and looked at the tape to understand what that was talking about. And he says if the builder, building becomes smaller in width, and he's speaking of a, a, a comment from one of the Realtors on the housing board saying that it will be less attractive to the real estate market. And I think that's important to say.
That's a huge difference.
It is indeed.
Okay.
The power of.
I, I, I had a, uh, a question on the same page, number three, Ms. Spencer's comments where she says that they were not able to review the finer details such as selected materials at this time. What does that mean? Does that mean that she is supposed to review them but has not, or is she just not gonna review them?
Um, I'm, I'm guessing it's, uh, so final materials are, are.
Final, final, she said finer, or is it?
It should be final, yeah, final.
Oh, it should say final, yes.
Okay, so she, so she's not, hadn't mailed her view those. Um, but, but will she be? I would think, uh, given that we're building most consequential building in a hundred, more than a hundred years, and one that'll be there for a hundred more, that, uh, she probably should review those, uh, materials.
The, the answer, Nick, is yes. The Design Review Committee will be part of that as ongoing, so.
It was one of the, it was one of the conditions of the permit that they would be reviewing, uh, and the planning board would be approving. But they would be reviewed by DRC.
Great.
Okay, uh, any other, um, amendments?
Oh, I did have one. Hold on, on the last. Oh, on number five, Mystic River Watershed Association, they actually said they don't become confused with the Metropolitan or the Massachusetts. The MWRA, the Mo- Massachusetts Water Resources Authority, they call themselves the MY RWA.
Yes, it's M, little Y, R, W.
RWA, so when you have that acronym there, you have to have it their way. And that's in two places on this memo that I saw.
Okay.
Okay, that's what I had.
Um, would Yi Ching and Sally, would you please, uh, email Nancy with your edits?
Yes.
And then I would, I would welcome a, uh, motion to approve the minutes. Uh, thank you, Brian. Prove the minutes of Tuesday, March first, twenty-twenty-two, as amended.
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
Excellent, and, uh, I'm afraid, uh, Nick, you will have to abstain on this one, but I'll call you out anyway, Nick.
Yeah, I'm gonna abstain on this one.
Uh, Kurt?
Hi.
Uh, Sally?
Hi.
Yi Ching?
Hi.
And Diab's eyes as well. So thank you very much. Thank you, uh, Nancy, for excellent minutes. Okay, so, uh, now we come to, uh, liaisons and, uh, representatives from the planning board to other boards, and so we have a bunch of them. Uh, anyway, Brian, you can make them all fit on one, uh, at once.
Right, just scroll that up a, a little bit. One line, one or two lines.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's only one line not showing, Brian.
Okay, thank you. There we go, okay. So, um, the one, the obvious ones that need to be, um, dealt with are Cheryl's position on capital planning, and I've already taken that on. Um, then we have Cheryl's, Cheryl, wow, Cheryl got away with just the one.
Correct. She, that was the only one that she, she had.
That's not really getting away.
Not getting.
That's not, but, um, okay, so, uh, at, at this time, uh, I think that we probably, um, do we want to go through this quickly and give an, an idea of, um, what each one does? Uh, so Nick has an idea of what the fund he's missing out on. So, uh, Climate Action Advisory Committee is an advisory committee to the select board on the town's climate action plan. Um, Committee on Names is, uh, very seldom called, uh, just names of streets and places. That's what the Committee on Names does. Uh, Conservation Commission, I hope, uh, they deal with, uh, all wetlands and construction near waterways. They have that. Uh, the Council on Aging is, um, huh, they deal with elder issues and a whole bunch of other things that, and I did Brian's on that. Uh, Design Review Committee, uh, they are, they review, um, design for ZVA permits, they do sign review. Um, they, um, also help us with our reviews on our permits. EF PBC, um, Yi Ching? You know what this is about more than any of us, because.
Um, it's a committee that deals with the properties, uh, um, that are owned by the school committee.
And, uh, that will probably.
Is that, does that include schools?
Yes.
Okay, is that, is, are those the primary properties?
Yes.
Okay.
So they're really, um, involved in the lynch right now, that they're, they're busy with that.
Right.
Um, Field Management Committee is what the, what it says, is just dealing with the, uh, athletic and recreational fields around town. Uh, Finance Committee is, they're the ones who deal with the, um, the annual budget. And they, they review it. I don't know if they, do they get their, um, I think they're, 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 they come from the state. I think, I think every town has to have a FinCom. Uh, Historical Commission, uh, Sally, you want to give a brief thing on historical?
Well, um, I can. The, the Historical Commission is charged with, um, the preservation and documentation of historic assets in our town.
And they also have the power to, um, impose demolition delays on homes of this appropriate age or to lift them. They also provide input to the ZVA and to us. Uh, Housing Partnership Board is, uh, they are a, I believe, a state-required board which deals with all elements of housing in town. LHDs, um, Sally, has the Sims LHD really taken off yet?
Um, no, and I was actually surprised to see my name on there, and I would be happy to be taken off of that.
Okay.
They have, yes, that, that group has not met in a bit. Um, we are going to be meeting before the summer, um, once there's a little bit more research uh, done, uh, related to this MHC project in this area. Um, there's definitely a ground swelling of, uh, concerned residents in that area. And that's why the Historical Commission is looking into potentially putting an LHD in that area.
So can we take my name off that?
Yes, it has been taken off. It's now open.
I also wanted to take my name off historical.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we have two openings. So the MBTA Advisory Group is a longstanding group that's been working with the MBTA dealing with, it's essentially the interface between the town and the MBTA. Um, I don't, do you still want to be on that one, Sally?
Um, I don't mind. I'm, I'm kind of keen on understanding where we move from here. We're gonna come in just some really important public realm conversations any day now in the next three years.
You're talking about the MBTA in particular. Yeah.
Talking about the, the train station downtown.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I'm just keen to keep, I, I mean, I'd be happy to attend if they convene.
Okay, well then, let's get going then. Uh, Open Space and Rec, Brian, do you want to describe which, what that one does?
Or, um, the Open Space and Recreation, uh, Plan is actually, um, promulgated by the Conservation Commission in conjunction with the Select Board, because it has to do with town-owned land. Um, so this is, it, it's similar, but not the same to field management, where field management is much more related to care of the fields, timing of the fields. Um, do we have enough fields? Um, and Open Space and Recreation really has to do with more planning in terms of, um, uh, potentially not just programming, but, um, expanding different types of use of passive recreation, uh, and other, uh, other types of, um, uh, management of, of existing, uh, open space in town.
Okay. Um, School Committee, I think we all know that. Yi Ching, is that something you want to stay on?
Um, yeah, I, I think that's the one, um, I, I do have a lot of, uh, interest in, and I'm, I'm happy to do it in partnership with the EF PBC, since those two come together um, well.
Okay.
But if anybody wants it, I, I'm, I'm, you know, open to negotiating.
Okay, some horse trading coming up. Uh, Select Board, uh, we all know what that is. And I think the Chair usually is the liaison to the Select Board. Uh, Brian, you are the designated rep to the Street Tree Committee, which, um, you want to describe sort of what they're, uh?
Um, yeah, so the Street Tree Committee deals, uh, very specifically with street trees and other public shade trees. Um, uh, so these are trees on, on, on public property, um, either, uh, within the right-of-way. Um, uh, sorry, it's within the right-of-way. Uh, and then, then there are other trees that are actually as the most recent as this last town meeting that now are actually gonna be governed by the Conservation Commission. So that's other public land that's, that are not street trees. Uh, so that's the distinction, um, is that this is just talking about trees within the right-of-way.
And that also, there is some money from the Peter Van Aken Fund, which is, do you, do you get to say how that's used, or is that another entity?
That's, that's more, well, we're gonna learn more about that at our Tree Working Group, but I believe that's more centered under the DPW. It's like a line, um, and item under the DPW for, for the management. Um, but we'll, uh, learn more about that on Thursday at our tree, uh, tree working.
Brian, it, it, I think it, it's instructive to note for Nick's benefit and anyone else who might not know this, that the Permanent Street Tree Committee, as it is currently listed on our town website, has not met for a long time. Um, and, um, the Tree Working Group is, um, a related but separate initiative to expand the scope of tree protection in the town.
Uh, yes, I agree.
So the Permanent Street Tree Committee, is that this Street Tree Committee that you are representative to? Okay.
Yeah, that, so that's, uh, staff, so that committee is completely staff. So it's, it's DPW, engineering, um, planning, and.
Well, there's two, there's two members listed on the town website who are town volunteers.
I don't believe that they're associated with boarding committees, though. So you're right that it's not all staff, but I don't, there's, um, as far as I'm, I, I don't.
What do you mean, they're not associated?
I don't believe they're associated with other boarding committees, but, um, meaning that I don't think that, uh, there has to be someone from historic or design, or, yeah, I guess not like a specific, boarding committee represented other than staff from the planning board, so.
So this one that's on this list is a DPW Staff Committee.
The Street Tree, the, the Street, yes, the Street Tree Committee is, is, I bel, and I, I can, I can make a note to look into that further. Uh, but I'm, I'm pretty sure that it is a staff and the other representatives in town are not necessarily associated with a specific boarding committee, but there are other volunteers in town on that committee.
Okay, so this is the Street, this is the Permanent Street Tree Committee.
Correct.
Oh, it is. I was hearing the opposite when you said that.
Yeah, so that's why I, I, so it sounds like it is the one that you're speaking of, Sally. And there are two other community members on that committee. And, so, okay, so we should, uh, okay.
Down the road, it will be a task to discuss whether that committee gets dissolved or reconstituted into or whatever, but right now it's just sitting there as a placeholder on the town website.
Yep. Okay, uh, so as Sally pointed out, we also have the Tree Working Group, which is working towards the future of tree preservation in our town. Um, Brian, if you could scroll up.
Uh, just a second.
I think it's just the ZVA under there.
Yeah, ZVA.
Which, which reminds me that we don't have the ADU Working Group on there.
I know, there, I was just gonna point that out.
And so the ADU Working Group is a, a group of people from the planning board and the Housing Partnership Board, and I hope I didn't forget someone working on the, um, oh, no, and.
Council on Aging, Jenks.
Council on Aging, uh.
Disability Access.
Disability Access, thank you, hi. Um, and that group is looking at how ADUs could fit into solving some of our housing issues, uh, in particular, um, for people with, who, with disabilities or, um, in-law suites or things like that. So that is, uh, currently, I believe, Yi Ching and Sally are the board's representatives to that. And that is actually a, a joint working group. And that is actually a joint working group with all of those things. Okay, so in terms of opening up slots, so it looks like we have two slots that are open. We have historical and we have the Sims housing district and I know.
So I did ask us real quickly, is our goal to have board members filling all the positions as opposed to Brian or can you just help?
Yes.
Should Brian be filling these roles or should we be trying to take these off his plate?
I think Brian is required to be on some of them.
So, well, yeah, there, there are some that I'm, well, I can go through these very quickly. So typically council on aging. Sorry, that came out wrong. There is no, there is no specific requirement for council on, on aging. So that could potentially be anyone. Yeah, the field management committee is, that is mostly, that is a staff level, so that is, that is really not the MBTA advisory group, it's me and one other planning board member. Open space and recreation actually, I believe could be, since that's not a representative. That could be anybody as well. So this, this could, this could also be up. So it's really the ones that are potentially up for grabs which meet very, very infrequently are open space and recreation. And council on aging, so just those two.
So why don't we take your names off of those, Brian?
Okay.
I, I can let go of climate action if that, somebody's interested in that too. I think it's a meaty, it's a meaty one, but I just haven't been able to attend.
Okay, why don't we take you off of climate action?
Maybe too, Debb, is, is the expectation that we are attending every meeting these groups have?
No. I think the expectation is that you occasionally talk with the chair to see whether there are issues of commonality between the boards and if they have, if they need some sort of.
I, I think more like offline commi, any offline communication, if you're, you know, you're going to be, so if you are, if they're looking for some information or if you're looking for someation, some information, you would, that's who you would be talking to. So you, you, you would not need to go to every meeting if you're available to go to some meeting and there's a specific agenda item that's of great interest to the planning board. And you're available, you would go to that. If you can't go, you would maybe try to get, you know, a briefing after that. So yeah, this is not, other than the times of year related to capital planning. I think that's what it is. Capital planning and housing partnership board. You kind of are going to those, you are going to each of those meetings.
Anything, anything where it says representative, we are, we have a voting seat on that board, so we essentially go to every meeting. If it doesn't say representative, then other than I think on the L H D, I think that's important that you go to every meeting.
Agreed.
And the ADU working group and the tree committee. Okay, we're, we're just putting in a bunch of exceptions. Pretty much everything else is simply keep in touch with the, with the chair and, and, and as Brian put it much better than I can.
I find it helpful as a liaison to just pay attention to the town calendar, jump into what's on the agenda. When the board that I'm a liaison to is meeting, like for instance, conservation commission almost always meets when we have a meeting, so I frequently usually miss them, but to look at the agenda, track down the minutes, maybe watch the tape if there was something interesting going on, but just kind of keep a finger on the pulse even if you can't go to the meetings. Back to the planning board about, oh my God, this thing happened and it's really relevant to more works.
Yeah, it's, it's not a huge time sink.
It's not a what?
It's not a huge time sink.
No.
So we've got, we've got climate action advisory. Who would like to take that? And I, I'm looking at Kurt and Nick here because your names are not on this list yet. So thank you, Brian, for highlighting those.
When, when Sally said that she's getting off historical, I was wondering if that's an invitation for me to join or, or if that, if that was just in my head. But that, those would be areas that I would have some interest and I'd be willing to help it on the ZBA to the extent that Sally would like help on that.
Okay, then Nick, you're, you have volunteered for historical. Are you interested in the L H D for Sims?
Yeah, I like to learn about those and sure, I mean, why not? I don't know what, I don't know what the historical commission really does at this point. Nor do I the historic district. But sure.
I can certainly fill you in as, as we move forward through that.
Kurt, does something attract your eye?
Uh, yeah, I guess open space and recreation. I, I would be happy to, I guess, understand what I can do there. Yeah, otherwise I, I probably would have, I would have mirrored similar interest to Nick. I would have said like historic or maybe the Sims Corner since I live very close to Sims Corner would have been.
Yeah, if you want to use Sims Corner. You know, go for it. Either, either way.
Also, it sounded appealing given the lack of frequency of meetings.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to talk to you about how you, you manage your, your time given young kids and full-time jobs.
Yeah, I'm just picturing like the look on my wife's face when she asked if I had another planning boarding, planning for a meeting yet again tonight.
Yeah, yeah, I know it.
It wasn't a good look, so.
So we've got two left, council aging and climate action advisory committee.
I mean, just to throw this back out there, I, I believe I, I ha, I can easily do council on aging simply because I can always walk across the street. And talk to Philip Belts whenever I need to, so I think that's kind of an easy one for me to keep. Climate action, yeah, climate action I think is a little bit, a little bit different. I believe they meet monthly. Again, no one would, it's not a requirement. I'm not going to put Eching on the spot and ask how many meetings she went to.
I was terrible on that one. And I couldn't find their minutes. And I, no.
So now that, now that the, lucky for us, the sustainability director I share an office with and there will actually be probably a lot more coordination with that through me, just that, that's just going to happen naturally. So who's ever that, who's ever going to be that representative, I'll, I'll be able, you know, that I'm gonna, I'm more privy to more information simply by sharing an office with him, so.
I can be the liaison to that one.
Right, and that, that's everything then. Yeah.
That's everything.
Okay.
I would sign up for it, but I think my name's on too many already, so. So I think we're done. Excellent. Thank you all very much.
What, what the historical commission does.
Um, yeah, I can certainly, um, we can.
I mean.
Demolition delays, right? I think their minutes I think are almost exclusively about demolition delay.
That's, that's the power, so they're, they are essentially a permit granting authority for, for demolition. So that, that is one, that is one, but they also, as Sally said, their, their, their charge is to preserve and protect the historic resources of town.
You know, maybe, maybe one of these meetings, we can have someone explain to us what's so special about the historic resources. I'd love to get an education on that.
Sure.
You know, especially now that we're talking about, you know, you know, North Main Street and what's not, but.
And Macris, a, a, a grounding in Macris is a good thing.
Yeah, yeah. So anyway, we can revisit that as, as we get closer to coming up with various plans and whatnot.
Okay. So let us, our next step here is goals. So this is kind of where we all sit down and I'd like, I think we have until eight fifteen, Brian, is that correct?
So Forman Place is coming at eight ten. And then anyone else who's on the call, I do see a petitioner here. Last name Fu, that we actually are not meeting on that until nine ten this evening. So just a heads up that we are not meeting on that until nine ten, but eight ten, we have, we have until eight ten right now.
So is the goals discussion to describe or to, to discuss and then agree on the things that we hope to achieve by April, May of next year? Is that the idea?
I think that, yeah, I think I, I, I would, I'd like to do is have to go around the table and have everyone say a couple of minutes of what they would like to, what they would like us to accomplish over the next year or, you know, over the next six months. I think it might be more realistic to look at the six month and year timeframe. And, you know, we do have to lay the groundwork for fall of twenty twenty-three. So we should be thinking that far ahead, I believe, so.
You say twenty-three?
Yes.
No, I just wanted to verify. That's right. That's exactly right.
So, yeah, we're looking at it. This, sorry, this is, so this is based upon the election in terms of when we do these goals. It is a little bit off because, you know, our fiscal, you know, our, our goals and objectives are also based upon the fiscal year in terms of what we get money for specifically to do. So some two things that are already in motion are obviously North Main Street and Holton Street. So I think those are the known, those are the known goals or, but in terms of how, you know, in terms of what goals you want out of those two projects, I think that's really the right, what you're talking about. In, and anything beyond that, but I think the two things that are already underway because we have funding and we're, you know, we're moving forward. But if you have any specific goals related to North Main Street or specific goals related to Holton Street, that's, that's also helpful.
Yeah.
Well, I think the goal with North Main Street is to have zoning bylaws ready to successfully put in front of Springtown meeting in the spring of twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
And there's a lot of work as we saw from the proposals to get to that. Is that a good statement of our goal?
That's, yeah, I think, I think we'll just go around and, and people will give a thumbs up to each of them and we'll, 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 we'll prioritize them all. I think we did this last year with a spreadsheet or something like that, but yeah, let's, we'll just make a list and, yeah. This is not quite a brainstorming session, but.
On the water field lot, the goal would be that it would be impending the negotiations between the select board and the developer over the land development agreement. Then they begin their special permit process. And once that special permit application is filed, our goal is to get it hopefully approved.
So it's, it's unclear when they would be able to apply for their special permit. Real, realistically, it would probably not happen within the next year because they would need to get funding in order to do that. So I not saying it, I'm not saying it's not a goal, I'm just saying it's unsure if it's, you know, I think we're closer to two to three years out for that.
So this becomes very much another exercise in pre-application meetings. Something that we saw a lot of with the last project. And one thing that I realized that it is happening with regards to the building as it is being discussed by the select board is points of negotiation are including design. And as the special permit granting authority, we have input on design.
Yes, the only, the, the only thing I will say is that it's still unclear, so many unclear things. Still unclear whether or not they, they would be going through the planning board or the zoning board of appeals through a potential friendly forty B, for example, to, to do the same project, but it's unclear of the process is what I'm trying to say.
I've got a question, Sally. What, what does it mean, pre-application meetings? What's the significance of that?
In our zoning bylaw, developers are permitted to reach out to the town planner to have him help them coordinate a series of meetings with various departments around town so that they can get a advanced sense of how much their idea is going to fly or not fly.
And, and that strikes me as a valuable communication.
To do a notification to a butters until the actual permit, special permit application is filed.
But the point though is that if those, if this application does not go through the planning board, then they would be going to the zoning board of appeals.
And the reason for that would be why?
Because they may decide that they want to go through a friendly forty B. And a friendly forty B does not go through us, it goes through the ZBA.
Okay, so, so are they basically picking and choosing who they want to go through?
They, they want to do whatever, they've said they will do whatever the town wants. And it's a question of who, you know, I don't know if that's the select board or if it's a community, like, it's unclear again. Who's, who's deciding that? At the end of the day, it's obviously the applicant. But they have said publicly, because people have asked directly, what process is this going towards? Is this going towards the ZBA friendly forty B or is this going through a special permit through the planning board? And they have said publicly and in writing, they'll do whatever the town wants. I, I don't know what that means or, or who decides.
Well, the town is already described that law as being in the center business district and we're the CBD special permit granting authorities, so it, I guess I just need to study the.
I mean, it, it's more than twenty-five percent affordable. Sure, go for it.
If I could interrupt, please.
Oh wait, I understand that the affordable reference.
I'm sorry, excuse me, excuse me. We are here talking about goals over the next year. We only have about twenty minutes left, so any detailed discussion of whether or not Waterfield goes to us or the ZBA, I think is, is for another discussion. So I'd like us to concentrate on, since we still haven't heard from three other members of the board. So we have, I think, Waterfield lot probably not going to happen, but we'll put it on the list. Spring twenty twenty-three for North Main Street. Sally, did you have any other things you wanted to highlight?
Well, so the things that we're working on through this two working groups, one of them is the goal of creating a, a pretty, and this is in collaboration with two other boards. A trees canopy bylaw and an accessory dwelling unit bylaw. And those are very tangible legislative goals that we would set for ourselves. And the goal, if we don't bring it to Springtown meeting, the goal is to advance it for fall twenty-three, but we don't want to drop the ball. We want to keep it, you know.
Okay, so let's say we want to target for, target, our goal is twenty, our goal is twenty twenty-three spring.
Well, spring twenties, yeah, I don't know. I defer.
Okay. And ADUs, I mean, at some point, yeah, we should target spring twenty twenty-three, understanding that there's only so much we can come, we can bring forward at one town meeting, especially when it's the budget.
And then another thing with related, related to code was that we had talked about aligning a lot of definitions in our code. And that is a fairly big task. And I think that again, if we can't get it done by fall town meeting of the twenty twenty-two, which obviously is impossible, and we can't get it done by spring town meeting of twenty-three, then we have to go with the work plan that gets us to fall town meeting twenty-three.
I thought that we, we had, when we spoke with town council, they felt that they could do the work in time to get us something by June. Did I miss?
Fifty thousand dollars to review the definitions that we cited.
It was, it was definitely not that, that much. Fall town meeting, they had said it's still possible, but I think with each week that goes by, it's more like not possible, but it's still possible at the moment. It's still possible at the moment. It should be a goal.
So, all right. I don't, I didn't recall that they were going to be asking for specific extra funds to do that. I thought this was part of their nominal work for the town. Am I incorrect on that?
They came up with a proposal and a fee and it, it seems to, it is in line, yeah, we, we will most likely not have to put in. Certainly a lot, maybe a very little amount, but it's nowhere near fifty thousand dollars worth of work, we can, we can go over that scope. At a later time, but I think fall of twenty two is possible.
On the agenda for April.
Yeah, so, so let's do that, and we know, they, they claim they can get it done for us in time for fall, so why don't we? Put that on our goal. Okay. Anything else?
We talked about having joint meetings. Other boards for various reasons that have to do with common concerns.
Yep, so why don't we put joint meetings on there? And then I'd like to pass the baton on to someone else because we've got about fifteen minutes left.
I'd like to see the Holden Street written down so that we know what what the goal is there. That would be a pre visioning phase, okay? And we should probably expect like a written document maybe from a. A consultant by.
Well, we are. As of last meeting, I'm, I was instructed to move forward with the Holden Street with MAPC, that contract is almost executed. We are going towards about fifteen thousand dollars. Before June thirtieth.
What, what, what body made that decision?
This one.
What, what did?
We did.
Kind of like what we are doing for goals and, you know, elevating it, I would like to de-elevate, if that's a word. Maybe, I, I think we got better at it over the year, but the, the long time that we deliberate over. ZBA petitions. I think need to be de-escalated. If we could. And I wonder if there's a way to. Budget in this goal, like a margin of. You know, derailment or something, you know, I feel like last year we had so many. Derailments, not that ten commerce needed was, that, that's not a derailment, but that, that took up so much that a lot of these things just fell. By the wayside, and certainly Waterfield, that, that beginning of that turn was, was very, very time consuming work. Energy sucking, but.
I, 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 I'm not sure I understand what you'd like.
I, well, I just, I think if there is something like that, again. How do we? How do we? Tighten it, I guess, I don't, I, I just felt like it took up so much. I, I guess you can't really, you can't really.
Frankly, it's better project management by me, if you wanna, if you really want to know, I think that's, I think that's what's necessary.
Okay, so number nine is better project management.
And can I put the word tracking in there too, so that things that are. Balls in the air, stay in the air and we touch them at least every other meeting or whatever is a goal for that.
Yeah, but one thing I think I, I would say about this then is the prioritization, so like there, there is a lot, there is a lot, but. We, when we put so much on a table, it, it becomes, we don't, we don't attack very many, so if we could just prioritize. Re, I know all of this stuff is important, but.
I think we, we will be prioritizing these goals. Is that what you mean? So we're, we're gonna vote, maybe not tonight, depending on the time. But we will, we will prioritize these. Okay. Anything else, Etean? Okay, Kurt, Kurt, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I mean, I think if anything, I, I, I agree with Etean's comment on prioritization, I, I think realistically, based on my limited tenure with this group, I, I don't think. There's any way we get through all these things this year, not even close. Given the fact that we end up getting other agenda items that pop up every week. I assume, I'm thinking, right, ten commerce place is going to come back on some of the conditions and have to come back to us on some things, it just doesn't seem realistic, so I guess. I do think if it doesn't happen tonight, I think we need to have a really sober, honest conversation about prioritization and bandwidth and what we're actually going to get done, because I would rather. For example, pick three of these things and do a really thoughtful, good job and make sure they happen. Didn't try and like make incremental progress on all of them and end up going to town meeting with nothing in spring twenty twenty three.
Yeah, that sounds right on target to my ear.
Yeah, I, I note that, you know, we do have, we have the ability to work on some things in parallel. So for instance, the working groups were designed to work in parallel so that we do get some progress on some issues. So I think we can. Continue on a few at a lower level. Any other, any other ideas, Kurt?
No, that's it for me.
I had, I had.
Okay, I think that I would, I'd like to, one of the things. Yep, yep, hold on a sec, Sally. Nick, do you have anything?
I, you know, just basically, basically. Yeah, I mean, regarding what's been put in front of me, it strikes me as the North Main Street project is going to be significant. And so we want to make sure, obviously, we want to do a good job at it and. I imagine we're going to learn a lot more as we go forward. We want to keep obviously all of our constituencies in mind and. I think it's an opportunity, so, so I suppose. Given what I know, it sounds like that is a, is a priority, if not the priority of the coming months.
I, I, I would, I would echo that, I, I think of this list, that would be my number one also, so I agree.
Okay, let's, let's, let's finish the list, because I have one, I have at least one more I want to put on there. So we are going to, by, by this time next year, we will have to have a, to put together an action plan for the MBTA. What are they calling this, the? Multi-family district MBTA zoning. So we will have to have an action plan put together by this time next year, so I think that's a big act, big.
Can you just summarize in two sentences what, what that is?
That, that's kind of what Brian gave the update on at the beginning of the meeting. We are required to implement, we are not required, but. There is a new state law dealing with housing production.
Right.
Which. Is, is based upon where, what sort of relationship to an MBTA transit mode? And for instance, in Winchester, the requirement, it would be that we have a minimum of fifteen. Units per acre, that we have a minimum of fifty acres within a half mile of the MBTA station downtown. And that we zone to accommodate to sixteen hundred units. So. That's a big, we, there, that's a, it's a complex issue, but we will be required to have. An action plan out by this time next year.
All right, well, thanks for that.
So that's something to look forward to.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I think everyone else ticked off all of my boxes. I would like to see our website. So Brian, if you can switch back to that, I would like to see some work on our website. It's public outreach. I think that the plant, for the planning board to actually. Produce some outreach materials to the community, maybe a quarterly newsletter or something like that. That, so that people in town have a better idea of what's happening, so. That, that is my longstanding and I, I won't go into the, the planning board handbook, because that's one of my pet things, probably won't happen. So we have just a couple more minutes. We've got eight minutes, Sally, you had more things to add to the list?
The master plan implementation committee.
Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you.
I was gonna add that too, just that, because we spent so much time on it, though, I wouldn't say that would be one of my.
Times ten.
I want to second what you said about communications, Diab, that, that. You know, our minutes, our webpages, project documents being posted and, you know, findable links, all of that. Helps with transparency and credibility for our board.
Okay, so I think this is a lot. And I'm going to suggest that rather than going through and. Prioritizing these right now, we only have seven minutes, I know it's going to take us probably twenty minutes to talk about how we want to prioritize things. I don't think that a straight up and down vote would work. So I'm going to suggest that we hold off on priorities until our next meeting, I don't think that's going to. Delay any action on any of these things, because we've got the ball rolling already, so I, I think we'll be okay. So.
I'll punch up some of this wording, I'll make it a little. More action oriented, rather than just saying, you know, better project management, you know, like I'll, I'll flush more of this out. So that the next time you're looking at this in a packet, it, it, it has more measurable goals, which is what we're looking for.
Okay, excellent. Any last, any last minute comments on this, other than that we have a lot to do?
I did hear you say, Diab, that you didn't even want to talk about the planning board handbook and policies and procedures.
Yeah, because I keep, I've been saying that for six years. We do have, we do have a binder now, but yeah, I, I think that I would love to talk about that and start working on that, but I, I. Let's put it down as, as lucky number thirteen.
I think your point is.
And procedures.
Diab, your point is well taken that working groups. Are able to advance projects between meetings. As long as they are properly posted for open meeting law. Compliance.
And I think they've been working really well. So I know the tree working group and the ADU working group has been doing really, really good work. So. Okay, I think we are actually, we have about five minutes, our, our next guest's up. Maybe we can start five minutes early.
They are present.
Okay. So. Welcome to this next section, and so we are looking for, I think Brian did a great job of, of describing what we wanted out of consultants earlier. This meeting, I hope it was this meeting. And so what, what we're going to, we have three. Groups coming before us this evening to tell us a little bit about themselves and how they see. How their expertise and talents fit into what they think we need. I do not know if the board wants to make a decision tonight as to which of the three that we want to go with. I know that the sooner we start, the better, in particular, because we are, we have to spend. Whatever monies we're going to spend on the work that's going to be done this fiscal year, so the sooner we start, the better. So I don't, is the board feel like they would be willing to come to a decision this evening, or do we want to just listen? And come to a decision at our next meeting, and I'll open it up.
I think we need to have some time to consider the three. And make the decision at the next meeting, I mean, whether or not we spend, you know, a lot of time. It would be good to hear the presentations before making that. Decision.
Okay, I mean, we're gonna, yeah, okay, so.
When's our next meeting? The twelfth?
We, we. Yeah.
Yep, two weeks from.
I, I guess, let me know how the deliberation works, if we are, if we go in a separate section and have a discussion, but it would be, be nice to have that before we.
I think we would set aside time this evening, hopefully to have that discussion.
Okay, why, why don't we see what we can do?
Yeah, it's just a question of.
I mean, you know, it's, it is two weeks, so why don't we see what we can do?
Yeah, I don't like to lose two weeks when we only have like ten or six or eight, whatever it is.
Any, Etean, Kurt, do you have an opinion?
I think we should, maybe we ask ourselves the question after we hear the presentations and have a discussion and see if we're prepared to make a recommendation then.
Okay.
I think it's a good, good plan.
Okay, so. Brian, shall I turn emceeing over to you?
Sure, I'm, I'm basically going to turn it over to. Michael Wang and John Ruffo of Form and Place, I really want to thank you. Thank you for. Taking the call, we're really excited that you're here this evening. And I would, I'd really just like you to introduce yourselves and I've given you both co-host privileges. If you wanted to share anything, and if not, you know, the floor is yours, and again, welcome, we're really happy that you're here, we feel. Lucky that we had, we have three great consultants that we have to choose from, and just again, really happy that you guys are here, thanks so much.
Well, thank you, Brian, and nice to meet you all, and a couple of you, we've met before, but I'm Michael Wang and John Ruffo is here with me. And I can, I can share my screen if that's okay, we did put together just a brief. Presentation, which I've managed to get down to about seven minutes if I. You can cut us off if, if need be, but in any case, I just wanted to sort of introduce ourselves to the rest of you who we haven't met. Just to say that John and I have been working together for twenty years or so, first at Arrow Street. And then ten years ago, starting Form and Place. Our, I think we bring a pretty unique perspective in that we are both in the architecture and planning and design worlds. And we, you know, for years, we were working largely on the private development side of the equation. Designing and permitting very complex mixed-use projects. And in recent years, you know, a fascination with permitting has led us to developing an expertise in zoning and design guidelines and. And test fits visionings for communities, so. I, I have a, just a broad range of projects here, I'm, I'm going to select just three of them, just to give you a very quick vignette into each of them. Because I think they're particularly relevant to the North Main Street corridor. But I, we are looking forward to our, our conversation subsequent to that. So the three projects we're going to look at are in Meriden, Connecticut, where we did a TOD master plan. A project we have ongoing now in Springfield, Massachusetts with the city there, which is a district master plan. And then a project we did recently with Mass Development and MAPC, in fact, Josh Fiala, whose name I saw on the invite tonight. We collaborated on that project. So just starting briefly with Meriden and trying to sort of tie it into the Winchester task at hand here. This was a TOD master plan for the downtown, a sort of rather blighted area. Where a new high-speed rail station for Antrac was being developed, and the town really sort of took the ball. And ran with it, investing in infrastructure in the downtown, looking to do infill, mixed-use development. Create much more density in the downtown and enhance the public realm. This is some examples of some diagrams and envisioning both street, street level views and aerials that we often produce. John is the master of these sketches. This is an example of. A, a, a test fit that we did on a site highlighted right across from the new intermodal station. And this was in conjunction with testing ideas about this hybrid form-based code that we wrote. Which was really targeting mixed-income housing and infill development. Here are some images from the zoning map and, and hybrid bylaw that we wrote. With some diagramming, talking about citing of buildings and how that should be handled in each of these sub-districts that we created, each that has a different character to them. You can see, you know, how buildings need to front on primary streets as opposed to secondary and tertiary streets. Ideas about facade transparency at the ground level, liner buildings in front of structures like garages, et cetera, to make for active streetscapes. This is a vignette that we did early on in the process, the building with the red canopies on the left. Is a key site across from the station, that is just one of our, our, our initial visions for the site. Here it is today, actually implemented, and you can see on the upper right. Is the garage that is shared with the, the, the station and the downtown sort of historic district. And a liner building fronting on the street. So that is very exciting to see a project like that come to fruition and, and. We realize today. The, the second project I want to share just really briefly is some work we're doing with the city of Springfield. And this is in the area near Union Station where there was a gas explosion back in two thousand and twelve, I'm sure you, most of you will remember. And this is a, a district that's quite blighted, and the idea was how can we revitalize this area? And what we, we took to looking at was the idea of creating a, a converting Chestnut Street into a two-way corridor. That would become a gateway to the downtown and therefore drive traffic through the district and create opportunities for development, sort of in the cross grain. As we, we use that term when we last spoke. Off of the spine, and, and so this is the idea of importance of a quarter, but, but what can happen on either side of that and how the transitions happen. From the corridor to the surrounding neighborhoods, so here's an example of a visualization we did using SketchUp. Of, of a complete streets for. uh, of of a complete streets uh, for um for this particular district, you can see the uh, the bike planes integrated, the public open space all sort of connected there and and the power of the ground floor is obviously gonna be a critically important thing. Um, the last image from from Springfield here shows you how this then grew into diagramming of the district and the surrounding areas around the corridor. The layering of open space systems, uh, this was a study that looked at getting up to around fifteen hundred uh, units in this, in the area around the station, uh, a mix of multifamily uh, structures in darker blue and and townhouses uh in in the, in the lighter blue, and then in the lower right-hand uh, you know, image there, you can see an example of an idea we had about closing off a section of street uh, to expand a small triangular public space into a much more usable uh, public realm that engages uh, some of the surrounding storefronts, opportunities for um, outdoor dining, et cetera. So these are sort of the collection of of images that we would employ in beginning to explore a quarter like the North Main Street. Um, the last set of images I wanted to show you are uh, the project we did, like I said, with Mass Development and M A P C uh, for uh, is a master plan for the Center Business District in Winthrop. Uh, and this is an early sketch again of 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 some infill and public realm improvements in the downtown core, for those of you who aren't so familiar with Winthrop, um, it has the marvelous potential to be a beautifully scaled pedestrian-friendly environment, but as you can see, this view, aerial view, looking at sort of the gateway to the Center Business District i- is plagued by, you know, a lot of auto-centric uses with parking in front and the numerous curb cuts, a drive-through uses with parking and and strip malls setback from the streetscape, so there's very little definition to the public realm here. Uh, and so that was one of our main focuses in the master plan uh, and creating sort of pedestrian environments and linking together different parts of the town. You can see here a test fit study we did for mixed-use development at the gateway site here uh, with residential ground floor uh, commercial uses, and again, the sort of layering in of the uh the open space connections, both uh, better defined streetscapes, but also these sort of mid-block connections, et cetera, so um, that's the sort of example of that, and then also in Winthrop, uh, there was a a key site, you can see in the lower left-hand corner there, an aerial of a middle school collection of buildings, uh, which actually act acted as a a wall preventing connectivity to uh, one of their nicest features in the, in their, in their downtown. Downtown, which was uh, Ingleside Park, so we sort of in our, in our proposed uh, adaptive reuse, opened that up with uh, creating a pedestrian connection through there. Uh, ultimately uh, resulting in an expanded uh, French square, which is sort of at the core of their downtown and the associated building scales that that are uh, would be appropriate to surround that. So um, you know, it, I I'm gonna stop in a second here and to sort of open it up for your questions, but I I wanted to finish with uh, just sharing uh, that, you know, we've been working as urban design consultants for the city of Newton recently. Um, and we uh, created design guidelines uh, for both the Riverside Station project and the Newton Northland project, both of which are million-square-foot uh, mixed-use projects, and the way we like to think about it and approach it is at at multiple scales. So you can see here sort of the the chapter headings for the guidelines, uh, where we're looking at things at the district level, which could also be the neighborhood or the quarter level, if you will. Uh, and then also at the, at the block design level, and then getting into the details of the architecture. So in these, we're, we're dealing with issues of connectivity to the surrounding context, all the way down to things like facade articulation and uh, and ground floor design. And here's a couple of examples of pages within the guidelines where we can get into a little more detail about the the design criteria. Um, so um, lastly, I just wanted to say that I I did have the opportunity to to get up to Winchester this weekend um, and and do, and walk on the quarter, I felt like I needed to do that before we, we met tonight, and uh uh, it was, it was, it was fascinating to to look at the different conditions you have along the right-of-way, obviously, in the upper-left there, that gateway view as you come down the hill towards the the downtown, uh, I think is really a critical moment, and uh you're, you're, you're challenged by, you know, curb cuts and again, auto-centric uses, uh and uh, you know, a pedestrian right-of-way or a pedestrian environment that uh, could, could really be refined. Uh, as you looked at maybe putting the right-of-way on a little bit of a diet, as they say, so that you can create cross-connections, et cetera. But there are some moments uh, that that have potential and some areas where the the streetscape is better defined. Uh, so I I think it's a, it's a marvelous challenge and just the kind of thing that we we love doing, which we we do both professionally and and also uh, in in our sort of volunteer capacities with professional organizations like the uh, Urban Land Institute, where I'm on the real estate advisory committee. Um, so the last slide here just is to say that we, you know, are are familiar with the, your master planning effort that you just went through and all the outreach that was involved with that. Uh, and as well as the M A P C study, and uh, I think this sort of uh, series of recommendations uh, about development and improving the public realm is a great sort of framework. Um, and I I feel like uh, our approach to really digging into the visualization aspects of things and and sort of trying to get the dialogue to a higher level prior to, or uh, you know, we really getting, getting back into the community outreach component of it and building consensus is something that we really look forward to hopefully collaborating with you on, and uh, I think I'll stop there and and uh, and open it up for your questions and thoughts. Thank you.
I think you can take a breath now, Michael, it was great.
I know, I'm sorry, I tried to do it fast, I don't know.
That's perfect.
I I like the presentation quite a bit.
Yeah, I just want to say that we have about ten minutes for uh, questions, uh, and then our our next contestant is coming on at uh, at eight thirty, I believe.
I mean, I I I love the visuals, I, and uh, I mean, one of the things that I noticed looking at the uh, paperwork that we received earlier, uh, is part one. What's the first thing you we do, and it says, listen. And uh, I I can't think of anything more important uh, in a collaborative process than a good listener in terms of working together with the planning board in a nuanced way to uh, you know, to achieve what we want to achieve, but I I I guess in terms of the presentation, it was I mean, right, right down to uh, the pictures of Winchester, uh, the drawings, I mean, a picture's worth a thousand words, uh, and it seemed like a very thorough presentation, uh, and and, you know, I I guess uh talking about definition to the public realm and defined streetscapes, I think these are the, this is the type of language that we need to kind of the conversation that we need to be having um to, to have a collaborative effort that gets to a really great outcome.
Okay, thank you, um. We have, uh, why don't we, why don't we go around the board, uh? And uh, if someone else, we can come around if someone has uh, remembered the question they had wanted to ask. So um, is there a question um from Sally, you look prepared to ask a question?
Not so much a question as just to thank Michael and John for the proposal, because it um, reflects a lot of the sort of process um, that I've had a lot of questions about and wondered how you move through it, and it just feels like um um, we could have some success with this approach. My biggest concern is community buy-in, um, so that people feel very much that they're not being told what their neighborhood's gonna look like, they're going to be allowed to be part of bringing the best out of their neighborhood, or bringing the best to their neighborhood. Um, I think people in town are very they're just, they just have a lot of civic pride and and they want to be part of of major changes like this. And so I feel encouraged by your proposal.
Thank you, and I, I can I, oh, John, do you want to say something, or?
I know, I was just, I was just saying, thank you, actually.
Yeah, yeah, no, I was gonna just say that I, I I was concerned that you had felt maybe, and when first spoke, that we were downplaying the community outreach aspect of it, and and that wasn't the intention. I think, you know, right now, we're working with um, the whole redevelopment authority as well, as they kind of um reconceiving uh, you know, development and opportunities on a particular site at Man Tasket Beach, and and they're trying to refine their urban renewal plan. Um, and they have taken the approach which I think we're fascinated by of of really trying, at this point, there's been a great deal of community input, and as you guys have had through your master planning process, et cetera. And and they feel like um, getting a bit of a vision clear, more clearly formulated, a- and then taking it back for additional uh, insights from the community is is a good way to go without convincing them that, you know, that you've already reached your conclusion by any stretch of the imagination, but uh, just to sort of kind of direct it a little bit more and try to get the conversation to a little bit of a higher level, so that was our thinking there.
That sounds great.
Uh, you check?
Yeah, thank you so much for that presentation, I thought it was really um, thorough, and thank you also for doing a little homework on our uh, Main Street. And I um, think that this particular area of town has been, um, has historically been um, an area of divestment, um, some redlining, so some, some scars from that, um, and I think that also the population um, in this North Main Street area has one of the more diverse um, eh, non, non-white sort of population there, and so I think, you know, in in terms of that kind of um dynamic, what, what approach do you guys have in um, maybe restorative justice, i- i- if any, or or ways to um, address some of the inequities that have been long um, playing out in that region?
Maybe I can speak to that a little bit, um, I think restorative justice is actually something that runs uh, pretty near and dear to my heart and to um actually to to my, my wife as well, who's um, an installation artist, where we've been uh we've been working on an, on an installation that has to do specifically with redlining. Um, it's local to the Boston area, so we've been really immersed ourselves in studying the um, you know, the those kind of, those kind of situations and understanding that when you bring yourself into the context in which um, I want to, I would just say, in which you're understanding that you're um, a white person who is in, working in the context of um people who don't have the same uh, experience that you do, I think you have to do that with a great deal of humility and a great deal of listening um, to get the foundation under yourself set, because I think it's, it's really easy to feel like when you go into the kind of dialogue that um, I think uh, what Sally said um, about people don't want to be told um, what it should look like, or um you know, that it's, it's a real collaborative visual, visual dialogue, as well as a collaborative um, listening and speaking opportunity, so our approach is always first, listening. Secondly, visualizing. But also repeating that again, so that there's opportunity for refinement of the things that we say and do and draw. And I I just, I think it's so critical to to come in with the humility and the understanding of the um of that your, you're, you might not be the primary source of the ideas that need to be on the table here, and I've I've become very, very aware of that, especially in the last few years.
Thank you.
I don't know if that answered your question.
A little bit, yeah, but in in terms of like um I I appreciate that approach, and I think that um, person-to-person approach is really important, um, but also, you know, in the form-making in in the development of of mass and and, you know, activity, you know, how does that, you know? I I'm I'm sure it's a really big question of how, you know, that, that becomes what it will be, but I think the origins of the ideas, the understanding of people, I think that those things are all very important, I appreciate that. Emphasis.
Okay, um, thank you, uh, Kirk?
Sure, yeah, um, Michael and John, thank you guys, um, great, great presentation. Um, I, I think Sally was right to point out that I think um, your community buy-in uh, is a really big part of this project, I think in my mind, another big part of it is actually, at the end of the day, getting to um, like words on paper that are actually, you know, zoning guidelines and design guidelines that we can present to the town and try and get approved, say, like a final product in my mind is really important, too. Um, and so I think with that in mind, um, I'm gonna try and articulate this question, but I thought your Winthrop example was really interesting. Um, are you able to assuming this happened, or convey sort of what kind of language or what tactics you implemented within like the zoning or design guidelines there to try and facilitate creating the vision you showed us from clearly privately-owned land and projects that were not at all consistent with what you're envisioning? Because I'm I'm thinking one thing we're gonna have to do here is there's probably gonna be certain parcels that are just very inconsistent with our vision, but their current use is very inconsistent with our, our you know, ideal use is, so how do you craft zoning language and design guidelines to try and encourage that change of use over time?
Right, well, thank you, Kurt, um, I mean, I I think we made some recommendations in the master plan for Winthrop for some um, zoning tweaks, I think the place, the project probably that had the most uh, you know, uh impact in along the lines of what you're talking about was in Meriden, where we were um, you know, really crafting this form-based code. Not, not only to deal with issues of of uh, you know building siding and architectural scale and appropriateness for each of the districts, but with other very specific targeted goals, like the goal to get uh mixed-income housing into the equation, so mixed-use, mixed-income product is something that was really uh, incentivized in the, in the zoning, so you, there were density bonuses uh, for, you know, particular types of housing product uh, that met certain thresholds, et cetera, so there are ways to craft, you know, the zoning uh, language in addition and some, you know, and supplement that with the design guideline ideas that really target specific goals that we'll hopefully develop first, uh, you know, prior to beginning to think about which particular aspects of a zoning really need to be focused on, so.
That's great, that's all, thank you.
Um, I'm gonna sneak one question in before the bill, um, so one of the things I noticed is that the uh, the examples, the projects that you worked on that you showed us are all, they seem a lot more urban than the North Main Street corridor, they seem that they are in the midst of larger commercial areas and Main, North Main Street is, you know fronted on a good chunk of it directly on on residential neighborhoods. So I'm trying to understand the sensibilities you would bring to that, that maybe were different from what you had to do in these other projects.
Sure. Uh, I mean, that's a great question, and John, I don't know if you want to chime in, but I can just start by saying that, you know, we those three examples did happen to be more urban, that we we've worked really across all contexts, as you saw in that ma- you know, matrix of images at the beginning of the presentation, you know, it included a context like Linden Square, uh, Wayland Town Center. We've done work with Mass Development out in in more rural settings like Belcher Town. Um, but, you know, I, and I also spent a fair amount of time in Circus New York, where you have uh, marvelous moments like Erie, Erie Boulevard, for those of you who have been there, which, you know, is is really that auto-centric world that wants to become uh, more integrated with the the core of the downtown. So um, I feel, you know, very comfortable and and confident that we understand what all of those uh, environments are like and how to knit those worlds together. I think, like, as I said previously, um, it shouldn't just be about the quarter, it needs to be about what's happening on either side of the quarter, you know, on those, those cross streets, uh, and and how that then ultimately creates this moment, this gateway moment, as you get closer and closer to the core, I don't know if you want to embellish anything on that, John?
Yeah, I would just, I would just say one thing, which is that the phrase I like to keep in mind is no backs. I think in years gone by, you used to be able to think of, there's a front of the site, there's a back of the site, there's a front of the building, the back of the building. I think nowadays, there there are no backs, and you have to understand that these buildings might be on a commercial street um, in the way they quote-unquote front, but the other side of them is maybe, you know can jowl right up against um, a single-family residence or a three-decker house. And so I just think, eh, when when we go into it, you keep the phrase in mind, no, there's no backs, and I think that's, that's an important thing that I always do.
Built, buildings in the round, right, so, so we we're designing a a four-hundred-thousand-square-foot project, you know, mixed-use project in downtown. Or not downtown, but in the center of Wayland Town, Wayland, you know, Wayland, which is a historic New England community, you really have to be careful about all your exposures and connections, so, you know.
I would just say that 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 uh, I, I think that it's critical that we have the comfort level. I would just say that 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 I think that it's critical that we have the comfort level.
I think you muted yourself.
Nick, you've just muted. Nick, you're muted.
Oh, I, yeah, I was just gonna say that it's, it's, it's critical in relation to this that we have a comfort level, which I think that we have here, which will allow us to bring up this and a number of other things that we haven't even thought of yet. And ultimately, it it's gonna be based on the planning board's input, who in turn are gonna have input from the community. But to have a couple of professionals that can help guide that process while being good listeners, I think is really gonna be critical here. So the issue of whether it's got a more urban flavor versus blending with a residential street, obviously, that'll be something that we'll have to discuss. But, you know, as long as we can feel comfortable that there is a back and forth and that there is listening, I'm, I'm, you know, I I'm comfortable that we'll be able to cross these milestones as they come up.
Okay, uh, thank you. We unfortunately are out of time. But thank you. Am I right on that, Brian? We are out of time, yes. I'm I'm not very good as a timekeeper usually. So thank you both for coming. It was a really great presentation. And you will hear from us soon.
We look forward to that. Thank you for your time.
Take care.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Great job. Thank you both.
It was a pleasure. Thank you.
So Brian, are you, you're gonna let our next group in?
Uh, yeah, David Gamble of Gamble and Associates. I'll, I'll let him in and then, yeah, it'll be back to you.
Hi, David Gamble. You can, you are. Hi, welcome. Welcome to Winchester Planning Board.
Thank you.
I, Brian, does, does, does David Gamble have screen sharing abilities?
Oh, no, I did. I did not do that yet. Are you gonna want to share your screen, Dan?
I will now, I guess.
And how would you, how do you prefer to be called?
I'm sorry?
How would you prefer to be called? David?
No, you can call me David, but I hadn't prepared anything in terms of a presentation.
Well, why don't you then, why don't you go ahead and introduce yourselves to the group and 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 give us an idea of how your expertise and talents would help us move forward with our North Main Street revision?
Absolutely. Thank you all for giving me the time and the space that you've probably been on Zoom all day long. And I know you met with someone just now and are meeting with someone after me. So I'm David Gamble. I'm an architect and I'm an urban planner. And the vast majority of our work is working with municipalities and finding ways to create more livable, sustainable, beautiful and resilient places. So we function really at the intersection of architecture and planning. And that for me is essentially the essence of urban design. So I am a planner. I think like a planner, but I am a designer. And where we, I feel differentiate ourselves in the bulk of our clients, our, our public agencies or or cities is finding ways to harness all of the good efforts and all of the outreach and all of the planning that places have done and move them more quickly into implementation. So my focus is both in my practice and in my teaching is finding ways to overcome traditional barriers to redevelopment, be it regulatory, spatial, political, financial. And that to us is provides the greatest joy, frankly, but also working with communities that are like yourself well positioned for redevelopment and are trying to channel that growth towards other ambitions that you've identified in your plans. So I I I certainly could have showed you a bunch of corridor plans, but it's actually more interesting for me and maybe even more productive to hear from you about ways in which you think, given what you've done today, which is significant, how you can bring the community along. I don't want to say educate, but what are the ways in which you might think about the transformation of this corridor that are helpful? So I'm turning it back on you.
Well, I mean, obviously, this is, this is a
Yeah, I just wanna, so we have, we have approximately fifteen minutes. So why don't we split the time up about three minutes apiece? And so, and that will allow us to get it. So everyone has a chance to talk. So Nick, you seem to be wanting to go first. So you've got the first.
Sure. Yeah, just just in terms of community buy-in, and how how does one typically think about a collection of privately owned properties? And then think about a kind of a visual cohesive whole? I would imagine that this is a long-term process and that not every parcel is gonna, is gonna be transformed right away. But but how does that work?
It's a great point, because properties change hands on an incremental basis. And different property owners are gonna make decisions based upon their own predicament, right? But it's the corridor as a whole, the cohesiveness of the whole that actually requires the vision. So guidelines are great. They're not as effective as a lot of people think they are, because many developers will say, we're following the guidelines, but they're not really, they may not be. I think to answer your question, Nicholas, is how does one define a vision for the corridor that's aspirational enough that gets people excited, but also specific enough that individual property owners might actually begin to implement them? And so it's a balancing act of specificity on the one hand, maybe even standards or requirements, and an aspiration for what this corridor might be at its end state, or at least as it evolves?
And and how might one, as a follow-up, go about getting the buy-in? I know that Kurt had mentioned language that we would bring to our town meeting at the end of this process that would be specific enough, but would be worded in such a way that would have maximum possibility of success of being approved?
How, what would the language be, you mean?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, how does one, I I guess it's something that you would be able to help us with.
I hope so. You know, I often feel like what, what consultants say and maybe what the municipal planner says are sometimes not that different, but because it's from a consultant and not a municipal planner, people somehow are are more willing to sort of engage in that conversation. Maybe that's not a fair assessment, but I think that what one could do is to help span the spectrum between the vision, the aspiration. And there are certainly people that think that way. But more often than not, it's assuaging the individuals who are maybe most concerned about a single story on a building adding adding a height or a setback or a step back, because they're not really sure what it might mean physically. And look, lots of people have a hard time visualizing things, even designers, right? So I think that particularly at the geography in which you're describing, it's learning to, on the one hand, move incrementally and judiciously while building up to a broader vision that people can rally behind. And that's a spectrum, because traditional public meetings are not always the best venue by which to engage that conversation. So I think to answer your question another way, designing a process of engagement might be as important as actually designing.
Thanks, David.
Okay, thanks. Who would like to go next?
I can go, yeah.
Please, go ahead.
Um, David, thank you for your, your proposal. Do you have, is there like a specific, you know, project that you've worked on that, you know, strikes you as similar to the North Main Street project that we're talking about? And if so, can you tell us a little bit about maybe specific language or tactics or incentives that you worked on with that municipality to help actually create, you know, the vision that the community and you put together, you know, for that location?
Yeah. So the best example is probably in Stanford, Connecticut, where I worked with the city of Stanford and the Housing Authority, which was looking to transform the blighted areas along this commercial corridor. It was a different economic status. This was one of the poorest neighborhoods in the city. And what's interesting is if you, if one were to establish, let's say, a massing study of all of the developable developable sites, even though that wouldn't happen, obviously, surface parking lots and underutilized buildings, you could mass that out and identify a capacity for future growth. And that might be used to gauge infrastructural investments or the cost of streetscape enhancements, things like that. But that's not enough. And what one has to try to do is to figure out what are the particularities of your corridor that might actually want to have more open space or greater density? And it's that calibration of what is an overall dimension of development that the town would like to see or that the residents aspire to? And then from a design standpoint, how might you make more site-specific decisions that would leverage relationships to area amenities or capitalize on some of your open spaces that are adjacent to it? So that's really where it becomes a design problem or a design opportunity. Identifying characteristics that are common and then more specifically, and we tend to do this in freehand drawings, what do you see from the ground as opposed to what do you see from the air? How does that design impact the characteristic of of the space? So again, I I draw a lot by hand and I could probably pull up a couple of images, but it's essentially having the capacity to visualize the change in ways that are accessible to the general public. And I I'm happy to send you all, you know, some examples, or I can point you to our website and and identify particular projects, but that would be the most I think that would probably be the most commensurate with with Winchester.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Oh, lucky for you. Who would like to go next? Yicheng or Sally? Okay, Yicheng, you're closest to Kurt.
Sure. Hi, David. I asked this question of the other other applicants, but in in terms of
Wait, you're meeting with others?
You mentioned this in your your last project, how it was one of the poorest parts of town. And I I wouldn't say the Main Street is, but it 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 has been a site of redlining and has been a site of historical divestments. And is is the area where there are a lot of non-white folks. So in in that sense, how do you, how do you approach these sites? And how do you, how do you address some of the historical inequities and you know, work towards some kind of more restorative justice?
Yeah, great point. I think, you know, a big lesson is that, is you have to go where people are. And that means actually, in this terms of engagement, it means finding other modes of of collaboration where people feel safer. And so that suggests that for business owners who have the bodega on the the street, they're not available for a public meeting. It means finding ways to connect with them in spaces where they feel comfortable. Whether it's faith-based or or business owners. And I was in Rochester, Minnesota, last Thursday, and we had posters in four languages, because we knew that there was an Arabic population that we were trying to connect to. We knew that there was Somali, Spanish and English. So I every planning board I work with is well-intentioned, but you're also kind of under-resourced or understaffed. And that's where having a firm that does this in in a more frequent basis, where we could help bring those means of engagement and techniques and strategies of connecting, we can help bridge that gap, I think. I I feel like, given the documents I I perused, you know, just before this call, you guys have done a lot of planning and you should feel good about it. The question is now, how do you advance that work in ways that doesn't frustrate those whom you've already engaged or those who haven't yet had an opportunity to speak? And how do you bring them up to speed? And and that's where, you know, it makes a good deal of sense to, I think you're talking to Josh after me. Look, if they spent six months and 122 pages, there's a great deal of logic in continuing that momentum. At the same time, you know, it's sometimes it's helpful to think about other techniques that you hadn't yet deployed.
Yeah, thank you for that. That language part, I think, is a, is something that I hadn't thought about, very key, I think, here.
Thank you. Sally?
So the words that come to mind are balancing, not necessarily universally bought into goals. And also this sense of the granularity of North Main Street. So the town, because we are very close to Boston and we're an MBTA community, which, as you might know, is a significant designation. And because we are a part of the Commonwealth where there's affordable housing targets for the entire state, Winchester's under a lot of housing development pressure. And there's not a lot of places where we can expand our housing options in the town, but North Main Street represents one of those places. And so not everybody is of the same mind that that should be one of the uses for North Main Street real estate. Many of the people who have lived there are second and third generation residents of that part of town, and they just absolutely don't want to see change that's gonna result in canyons of buildings. So that sort of segues into this concept of the granularity that it's such a, it's only a mile up and a mile back on both sides. And every lot and every side street and every segment is its own little personality. And recognizing that personality will do so much to honor and bring forward the support of the people who are most directly impacted by what I think of as great improvements, and they might just think of as just unwanted change. So I I just wanted to hear you talk about that journey to consensus.
Sounds like a great book.
I haven't written it.
Well, for many communities, density is a four-letter word. Because it conjures up all kinds of unintended consequences of what growth might mean, like traffic or shadows or delays at stoplights or parking congestion, et cetera. So thinking of it at a corridor scale in some ways removes people away from the granularity that you so well articulated, because it's it's about the the length of it over time and over a longer dimension. That's where I think the vision part comes in. The the granularity, you know, to me, that also speaks to the personalities of those people who might be the major property owners or the primary businesses or the faith-based, you know, leaders. And that's where I think having more intimate conversations is really essential, because those aren't conversations that are incubate, are gonna incubate in a in a public forum. So balance, I think Sally really is the key word. It's a balance of scale, it's balance of techniques of engagement, it's I'm, this is gonna sound wrong, but it's educating the public about what good design can do about density in areas that are so closely related to intact neighborhoods. And that that is a design issue. And that that can be communicated and it can be articulated and it can be understood, honestly. And that's where I I don't fully believe in just public meetings where people where you listen. I think it's actually an interactive process, helping people to understand why density near transit can help preserve neighborhoods that are trying to guard against expansion.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Thank you. Thank you. And I will slide my question in under the wire. So you, you, you go here 20 minutes and then the next contestant comes on. So so you've alluded to the the 122-page document that we that MAC, MAPC prepared for.
That was actually the action, that was the action plan. I can't remember how many pages. That was actually the action, that was the action plan. I can't remember how many pages MAPC's work is, but it's all
Well, so, yeah, so I mean, the key is that we have, we do have this existing conditions report. And I hope you've had a chance to look at some of it and get a flavor for what the corridor and what the neighborhood is like. And so my question to you is how, now that you, if you've looked at that, you get a flavor, what do you think are the the most difficult obstacles to moving forward, looking at that neighborhood? What is it that screams out to you saying this is going to be an issue that we have to, or so I'm just, want your idea of how you see that corridor?
Well, I'm gonna disappoint you. I haven't looked at that in detail, but experience. The right-of-way is going to be an issue, because there's probably fairly room to maneuver in terms of the public realm or the street section. So that's an issue. I do think that there's going to be some possibility for site aggregation. There, there might be parcels that could be thought about in aggregate, that could create a larger development opportunity, and there may also be sites that are in fact, too large and would benefit from some subdivision. So I would, I would say finding, what are those key catalytic sites that if they were done well? And if one can imagine a development partner who is like-minded, could demonstrate to the broader community what the efficacy of that strategy could be across a bigger area. So key parcels or key sites that could be most catalytic for transformation. And then lastly is the identity. What is the character of the street itself? And how does the streetscape, lighting, tree canopies, materials, etc. add to the you know, reputation in some ways. Winchester is, I think, a highly regarded destination despite the corridor's condition. So how do you build upon those assets that really allow the town to grow and safeguard about encroachment in areas where you don't want it?
Okay, thank you. Unfortunately, we have run out of time. So I'd like to thank you very much for visiting with us today and I think we shall hear from us soon.
My pleasure. Tell, is it Michael or Josh? Who are you meeting with next? Tell them I said hi.
We will. Yep, Josh Fiala.
All right, Brian, thanks. Be well. Thanks for the opportunity. Take care. Shall I leave or can I stay?
We did make the other candidate leave.
Okay, all right.
It's, it's depends on how much you like the clash. Okay.
So I do have Josh here. I was gonna let him in.
Okay, now known as MAPC Zoom Line One. Hi, Josh.
Hello.
Hello. Sorry that we are a little delayed in getting you on, but please welcome to some of the people on the board. You are known. And I think our newest board member, there he is. So why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself? And do you need, do you need to be able to share your screen?
No, I do not. I have prepared remarks, but no materials, so.
Okay, so why don't you go ahead and start?
Great. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. So I'm Josh Fiala, Principal Planner at MAPC. MAPC is the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, so we're the regional planning agency which serves the 101 cities and towns around the greater Boston area, including Winchester, who we've had the pleasure of working with for the past year or so, me personally with you all. So I see you have a very respectable shortlist. Very happy to see both David and Michael, you know, working with you all. We've worked with them in the past and they're very I don't think you can go wrong with your choices that are in front of you. So a little bit about my background personally, and then I'll talk a little bit about MAPC in general. But I come from a background of a architect. I'm a registered architect and a certified planner, both. And so really meet in that middle ground, which is referred to as urban design generally. And bring those skills to my assignments at MAPC. And so have been involved over my time here and previously as a consultant planner. Looking at how to improve places and how places are put together. And looking at places like the North Main Street Corridor in Winchester to think about their existing built conditions and the ambitions and vision of the community, which we articulated with you all and the planning board members to define that through the report that we produced for the North Main Street Corridor last year. And then the important work, which is to translate that vision into zoning. You know, an actual bylaw and the parameters which go into the bylaw, including design guidelines and the like, to make sure that what gets built is reflective of the hard work that was put in and the visioning and consensus building that occurred with the community through that process. So we've done that work throughout the region and through my work previously throughout the Northeast, really. And so have looked at places like North Main Street and how they can transform and need to transform to remain relevant as a place that serves the needs of the community, but also relevant in terms of the real estate market. So there's reinvestment that needs to occur in properties, that reinvestment to support ground floor retail and the life and sort of energy of mixed-use corridors, but then also the need for investment in housing in our region. And that's a strong sort of connection and segue to our mission as a regional planning agency overall. Housing is one of those key features which we've seen again and again show up in all of our communities and the falling behind of housing production with what's really needed to meet demand. And that's why we're seeing a crisis of affordability, equity issues and the like, not just in Winchester, but in other places. So all of that is connected to the Main Street Corridor and the vision that the town has helped to define in terms of promoting mixed-use development there within parameters that respect the neighbors and the neighbors' desires for what might occur there and to have everyone really support through that corridor a high quality of life in the town, which is complementary to the downtown, which you're also working so hard to support and guide in its development there. So a few other things about MAPC. In addition to my place in the agency as a land use planner, architect and urban designer, we have in the neighborhood of 100 staff of other disciplines, so economic development planners, transportation planners, public health planners, arts and culture planners, a whole roster of expertise which we can call upon. Whenever, you know, whatever direction might be needed when we're trying to make sure that the all of the components of the zoning for North Main Street are properly aligned. So that's, that's, I think, a great advantage of our agency and one of the advantages that we bring to supporting our communities, the 101 cities and towns throughout the region. Will align and assign ourselves to processes and projects on a sort of as-needed basis and can depend on that expertise as needed. One example of that in relatively nearby neighborhood, neighbor in the city of Medford. We were doing a rezoning effort along the Mystic Avenue Corridor, which is not quite the same as North Main, but as you know, is an interesting counterpart. But one of the things that really came up there in a similar rezoning effort and strengthening the zoning was a focus on public health. And so we were actually able to bring in Barry Keppert, who's the director of our Public Health Department, to really refine and think about the types of public health guidelines that should be integrated into the zoning there, which has a close proximity to the I-93 highway. So they were very concerned about you know, air quality, particulate matter and those types of things. Which to some consultants might have been left scratching the head a little bit. But you know, with this roster that I'm mentioning, we're able to pull them in seamlessly to the project and respond to that in a very specialized and expert way. So that's the type of thing I think is really valuable to both have you know, myself as a built-in multidisciplinary designer that would be leading and guiding the effort with your help. But then also having the comfort level of knowing that we have all of those other staff members and the transportation staff, I think, might also really come in very handy in this regard, given the visioning that took place in the corridor and the importance of walkability and bikeability on North Main Street. So I don't want to go on too long, so just that, I think that frames some of the perspectives in terms of my own background, how MAPC you know, operates and provides technical assistance to our communities as a regional planning agency. And the, what I would frame as the relatively error-free and easy decision that you have with three very good choices in front of you. And I would love to continue the work with you all on North Main Street, but I also feel like with the candidates you've shortlisted, that the effort will be in good hands, and I hope that you all can bring it to a successful adoption at town meeting, however the zoning turns out and evolves from the North Main Street visioning process. So, thank you. Yep.
Thank you. Thank you for that. We have, we have about 12 minutes. So I think if we, everyone gets two minutes, we'll sneak in under the radar and just so people, I know we've gone in almost the same order, so let's mix it up so that people's questions aren't answered before they get a chance to ask them. So why don't we start with you, Sally?
So I guess the question I would have going forward is this is having to do with the next layer of engagement and true dialogue. I know that your first two community meetings benefited or had used a technique of multiple choice questions live in the meeting. And I think that yielded some useful information. For me, I'd like to know how you would get to the next layer of views. What is the engagement going forward that you would bring? And also, how would you or process address a lack of buy-in or resistance to change? Where we're sort of mandated to approach a more dense community character? That's my question.
Sure. Thank you, Sally. Good to see you. Yeah, the, I think there's a few answers to that, so I'll try to be brief, but one of them, I think we're in a place now where hopefully some of the engagement that may occur over the course of this process could be in person, which would warrant us different ways to engage and be less restricted by the technology barriers. So perhaps not dependent on that, but perhaps that might be a way to engage more closely around more open-ended exercises. For example, having actual boards in a room where people can engage with materials and provide us more free-form comments than they might be able to provide digitally. Although we have another tool we've been using more recently digitally, our JamBoards, if you've used those at all recently. So Google JamBoards are basically an open platform, which literally has digital sticky notes that you can stick on a board. So that would get to the same effect. So I think it's, it's in this case, in my experience, what we've seen is we aren't so much asking open-ended questions now. The recommendations, so where we left off from the report, we made a lot of progress. And we have a draft zoning proposal that we put forward as the appendix of that document. And so at this point, I think one of the techniques is to actually present that in an informative way to the community and to try to understand from the community directly where those hot-button issues are. So what are the alarm bells that are going off for the community? And what, listen to those alarm bells and then focus on those. So if the zoning has, say, 15 sort of major content components, we might see alarm bells come off in the community in three or four of those. And then we would actually guide the conversation to focus on in-depth those three or four issues, so we can unpack those issues. Show the community some technical information behind those issues and then let them make an informed decision. So if we were in the recommendations, for example, talking about a four-story building height, and that's the alarm bell, like no, four stories is crazy, everyone's going you know, all the message boards on the community are going crazy about four stories. Then we can talk about four stories. Look at the options around that, have some engagement around what the proper height is, and that doesn't have to be the deal breaker, and we can hopefully build consensus around what the right height is. And then come up with ways to make the zoning work from other aspects if the height needs to be different.
Thank you, that's helpful.
I'm muted. I'm sorry, I'm muted again. Yicheng, you're up next, please.
Sure. Hi, Josh, again. I've worked with you since, I guess, last year. I think you've been working with this crew a little bit longer. And I agree with Sally that the next level of engagement seems pretty critical. But you've seen a lot of communities go through this process and you know where we're at. And where our final zoning sort of practices, but I'm just curious about how you've seen that period from where we're at to the passing of zoning. And, you know, five years from then, like what, what, what happens? And like, what what should we be prepared for in terms of like, how slow the growth might be or like how, you know, what, what is it? What happens when we, you know, pass that law?
Yeah, that's a, that's a very important question. I think from where we are right now, in my experience, we can't take for granted that, and this may be obvious, but you can't take for granted that a set of recommended zoning changes would be adopted by town meeting. I think there's, there's a lot of work between where it is now and getting to that and feeling more comfort. But it's never, I've learned, never guaranteed, even when you think everything is lined up. There could be something that comes up at the last minute or some misunderstanding or miscommunication or you know, some dynamic in the community that wasn't anticipated, but you can't you cannot rush it. I think you have to have a process, which is great, which you're interviewing for, a process which gets you from what you have today to a actual town meeting warrant. And that, once that town meeting warrant is put on the the town meeting, it's basically, it kind of goes through its own process, you know, through the however it's set up with the bylaw committee or the FinCom is involved sometimes to look at those zoning recommendations, then the ultimate vote on the town meeting floor. So that, that process is one of, as I mentioned with Sally's answer, one of engagement, one of sort of outreach and education and understanding and trying to make sure through promotional materials or other things which I put into the brief scope write-up, which I've given you all for this zoning implementation scope. Is one to really designed to provide a comfort level and a level of understanding and ease. So that town meeting vote hopefully has more support than not. Once, once and hopefully the zoning passes adoption, I've seen it happen a few ways, actually. So in my view, some of the unfortunate circumstances sometimes are that nothing does really happen. So the zoning changes, but nothing on the ground changes and you don't see the investment or turnover of properties that you might have hoped for or anticipated. In other cases, there are projects, property owners or developers who are happy to see the changes that were discussed, envisioned, and you might see a property sort of be catalyzed for an investment from the zoning change, which in my opinion is something that is a very positive result and it means that the zoning is very meaningful and has been thought through properly. That's, that's not to say that pleasing developers is the only goal, but it's finding the balance point between the community's vision and what's actually putting, setting the ground for a feasible investment. So we're trying to take all of those things into account as we, as we think through the zoning. And that's another thing about the engagement with the community is I don't think it's just the case where if from our experience, we know to go back to building height, just because it's an easy one to think about and visualize. If the community is stuck on nothing larger than a one-story building, just that's not realistic, but throw it out there. Then then it's not just to say like, okay, well, we'll take that down. We see it's a very strong opinion. So that's what this will be. But it really is a give and take process. So we it's our requirement really to talk through what that means and why that type of requirement in zoning would would basically be a fruit fruitless out fruitless outcome. Even if successfully passed, it would likely not result in tangible investment and changes that you would like to see in the real world, not just as a zoning by law or on a plant. So that that's the give and take that we're trying to accommodate. It's not, it's not a perfect or exact science. If if we had it down to a formula, we'd probably be on the development side of things and making more money than planners. But the it's that sort of relationship that I think we're trying to approximate through this process and to help understand with the community.
We are getting very close to running out of time, unfortunately. So I know Kurt and Nick, if you have a couple of short questions.
Do you have? My time to Nick.
Okay.
No, I don't have anything additional. My my questions have been answered.
Okay. Then, yeah, and there's no time for me. So because we're we 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 do have some hearings, some special permits to look at. So Josh, thank you very much for visiting with us this evening. And thanks a lot for the work you've already done for us. And we shall get in touch with you soon.
I thank you all for the time and good luck with the decision.
Thanks a lot. So what I might suggest is that I know we wanted to talk about whether we're going to make a decision tonight. But if I suggest we we look at these Z B A hearings first, because I know that one of the one of the parties showed up last week, and I think that let's get those done and then spend a few minutes afterwards. And see if we want to make a decision tonight or how we want to handle that. So if that's okay with you folks, why don't we proceed? And Brian, if you want to lead us off on the first one, please.
Sure. So I'm just, I do see that the applicants are here for three thirty four Cross Street. I'm just going to go through my quick take and then give it back to you, Diab. So the petitioners are seeking site plan review in order to be permitted to construct an addition where the total floor area will be greater than thirty six hundred square feet. So there's no setbacks that are being encroached upon for this project, for this proposal. The property is located in the R G and contains just over ten thousand square feet, which is actually quite large for for that zone. The house was built in nineteen thirty eight. The historical commission voted six zero with one absent at their March meeting and that the historical commission found no adverse effect on a historic or cultural resource. And the design review committee also recommended favorable action with five zero with two conditions at their March ninth meeting. The conditions were to balance the proposed to balance the proposed addition, expand the front porch beyond the first window to the right of the front door. And then at the back of the proposed edition, replace the proposed picture window with three windows of equal size. So I recommended favorable action with regards to this petition based upon the two conditions from design review, if they're incorporated into the design. And also, just to be clear, the architect has updated the design drawings to change it from vinyl siding to wood plank siding to be consistent with the existing garage. And that's all I had for this petition. Back to you, Diab.
Thank you. And we have with us Assistant Town Engineer Brian Mantor. Brian, do you have? Does engineering have something to say about this?
Good evening, everyone. The the project is not proposed to increase impervious surface beyond the stormwater guidelines of five hundred square feet. So there's no requirement for drainage review. So engineering has no comment on this project.
Thank you. And if we want to take Yicheng's request to heart to get through these Z B A petitions efficaciously, why don't we, are there any concerns of the board?
Yeah, can I just ask Brian Man for one quick question?
Yeah, go ahead.
I don't, I don't want to belabor it because I I take Yicheng's suggestion to heart here. But I know the the proponent is changing the roof line and shifting, I think, all the runoff down to like the side property line. Is there any like concern or any issue with managing like the fact that now all the runoff from the roof line is going, you know, towards the property line, which I imagine is quite a bit closer to a neighbor than the front, you know, driveway, which is impervious?
Kurt, that's a good question. When we look at the review, we look at just like overall surf impervious surface area. And in looking at this design, it looked like they were maintaining the same sort of like roof layout. So we weren't really thinking about, you know, it running off onto the neighbor's property and how they were addressing that. So that wasn't something that we typically look at if it doesn't trigger the five hundred square feet.
So I can't answer that if it helps. I'm the owner.
Yeah, hold on, hold on one second. Kurt, do you want to, do you want to hear from the?
Sure. Yeah, no, if if they've thought about it and addressed it, yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, go ahead, please.
So, you know, current garage facing the street, there is on the ground, like, you know, we have the gutter and there's a running towards the under the ground is like pipe running the water towards the cross street. And and it will be still, even we rotate it, the gutter can still route it towards that. Let me see if I can have a picture showing where that is. Basically, it's it's already there's a gutter existing together with a little pipe running the water running out. So.
So I just made you a co host if you wanted to share your screen.
Yeah, if I can find the picture of of the garage. I do have the garage, but it's not the full picture of the garage.
That's okay. I mean, so it sounds like there's already basically like an under, like you have a a system that gets the existing runoff away from the roof line. And so this would just feed into the same.
Perfect. Yeah, I think you already see it on this. There is a, there's a gutter here. I don't know if you can see my muscle here. It, you know, there's basically got a way where I'm highlighting here. And there's a little connection where the water runs, you know, on the underground towards the street.
Got it. Okay, so it'll just, it'll just the new roof line will just run to the same. Got it. Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other concerns? If not, then I would welcome a motion. Nick, did you have something?
No, I know it's, I don't.
Okay, so then I would welcome a motion to, boy, we haven't done one of these in so long. I've forgotten the words. To recommend favorable action on petition number three nine, no, sorry, that's the wrong one. Petition three nine five six, three thirty four Cross Street.
Plan review, isn't it that we recommend endorsement?
Oh, I'm sorry. This is site planner. I apologize. Yes, this is site planner. We would recommend endorsing of site plan review of the site plan.
Conditions of the design review, right?
So, yes.
Okay, so the the language would be to recommend.
And to recommend endorsing the site plan with the outlined conditions from the design review committee.
What he said, exactly what he said. So a motion to that effect.
I so move.
Okay, Nick moves. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, roll call vote, please. Kurt Spring.
Aye.
Yicheng Scott.
Aye.
Nick Rosettos.
Aye.
Sally Dale.
Aye.
The objurious is I as well, five zero. Thank you very much. So sorry about the miscommunication that had you come by last week. So apologize for that.
No problem. Thank you. I understand, you know, this project is much smaller than the master planning, so I hope it's easier.
Sometimes they take longer, believe it or not.
Yes, good luck with your new space.
Thanks.
Okay, so now we can move on to petition number three nine five seven.
Yeah, so three nine five seven. This is fifty nine Holland Street. The petitioners are seeking a special permit to be permitted to construct an addition that will be located closer to the front property line than permitted as of right. This is in the R G zoning district as well and contains just over seventy five, or contains almost seventy six hundred square feet. The house was built in eighteen eighty. The historical commission unanimously voted six oh with one absent that the historical commission found no adverse effect on a historical or cultural resource. I did receive draft comments from the design review committee. They recommended favorable action five oh with four conditions. That's what was put in my memo. But a member of the D R C did reach out to me saying that they're still in the middle of finalizing those comments and that they're not exactly the way that they showed. So I'm going to take out my potential conditions from the design review committee. Still, obviously, it is a favorable action, but I did in my memo reference those conditions. And so, so, yeah, the only thing that's changed since the packet is that I wouldn't be saying exactly what the D R C had said in their draft minutes, because those are still being those are still being finalized. So the proposal entails the demolition and subsequent creation of a new wider open front porch. The existing porch does not appear to be original to the eighteen eighty house. There would be a small flower bed that will be removed as part of the proposed front porch, but still has a higher green space percentage and a lower hardscape percentage than other properties in the vicinity. The design of the porch is modeled after an existing porch in the neighborhood. And I recommended favorable action with regards to the petition incorporating potentially any D R C conditions. One of the conditions that had been put into the draft comments was to conform to the house to ensure an arts and crafts look to the new porch. That is what is apparently going to be taken out of the comments because it's apparently not an arts and crafts porch. So again, I would recommend favorable action with regard to this petition and to explore further detail of any specific requests that the design review committee might have. Back to you, Diab.
Right, so I think we we can certainly defer to design review on some design components. I I think that what am I trying to say? I'm trying to say that we can proceed without waiting for the designer review committee's final opinions because they will be making them directly to the Z B A with or without our inclusion in our in our own vote. So why don't we, again, are there any concerns with this project from the board?
My comment is just that the proposed elevation looks nice and it looks nicer than the existing. And I think it would bring some characteristics to the street, making it a little bit more open. And the only thing is just that the front door has changed, you know, from a central doorway to a side one, which I don't, I don't think matters. But it's just a more gracious entrance and I think it's fine.
Okay.
I just have a question. It sounds, it looks great. I mean, I, it would be nice to have a photo of the house. I think that would, I mean, not that I I don't know whether that's something that we have control over, but that that would, that would be nice to have in the future.
Maybe you can put it on a Google map, Brian.
Oh, right. That's true. Yeah.
Yeah, you can see it in street view.
Yeah, I was just about to put up the front.
No, no, it looks like a, looks like a beautiful project. Looks like a a nice addition.
Yeah, Rick, I don't know that photographs are a requirement for the Z B A, but certainly a number of projects do provide us with photographs, so. Kurt, did you, did you have something?
Just one quick comment, I think, on the D, the design review committee's conditions, which is if the existing front elevation, which differs a little bit from the street view, it shows like a smaller window above the gable as an existing elevation. So I I I'm curious if that is actually true, that that's existing. So if you go to the street view, it's not. It's like a larger window. Because in my mind, if that's an existing window, I I guess I don't agree with design reviews recommendation to, I think, require the applicant to replace that window with a larger window and lower the roof line. I just, I mean, maybe that's in their purview. I just think what they propose looks perfectly adequate as is. So I was just saying, I I don't, I don't agree with that condition, I guess, frankly, if if the existing window is that size. It doesn't seem necessary, in my opinion.
Yeah, I looked at the D R C's draft minutes and I believe they came to that, they came to the same conclusion at the end that if it was an existing window, then they would just leave it as is.
Okay, great.
Other than that, any other comments?
The, the, excuse me.
Brian, you're right.
Yeah, I just want to make a quick, this does not trigger a design, sorry, drainage review. I think they have, they have a net increase of impervious surface of not about ninety square feet. So it doesn't trigger a drainage review.
Okay, thank you. And my apologies. So for my, I love your porch. I love those sort of porches. So that's all I can say is, you know, I like the design. I think it really enlivenes the front. But so I would welcome a motion. And this time, I think we can recommend favorable action on the special permit, which is let me get the number. This is number three nine five seven?
So moved.
Six.
Three nine five seven.
That's fine. Pretty sure it's nine.
This one, great.
Thirty nine, okay, so moved. Okay, so we got a so moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Excellent. Roll call vote, please. Nick.
Aye.
Kurt.
Aye.
Sally.
Aye.
Yicheng.
Aye.
The ups is I as well, five not. Thank you very much. Thanks for showing up this evening, folks, and good luck with your project. It's going to be gorgeous.
It's gonna look really nice. Can you agree that that vestibule is so ugly? Just please stop.
I I don't.
An improvement.
Yes, I I think we can agree it will be an improvement. Cast aspersions on the existing front.
Looking forward to getting started on it, that's for sure.
Thank you all very much. Okay, folks, so now we come to nominally the end of our time. But still, I think we want to have a short discussion on how we want to move forward with the North Main Street consultants. Do we need more time to think this over? If we do, then I I do think we have to worry about extending this another two weeks. And if we want is is anyone on the board ready to make a decision this evening?
Well, I mean, it seems like there was one presentation that was head and shoulders above the rest, in in my view, on pretty much everything.
Okay, so I guess that's that's a vote for a vote this evening. Sally, you had your hand.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt. A little bit of context is that so all of them asked if something should, if they should prepare something. And I said, we are not requiring it. That is up to you. And Forman Place was the only one who ended up doing it, just so everyone knows.
Right, they, everyone had an equal action, an equal opportunity. They were, they were an informed bunch.
Yeah, can you remind us what our, remind me what our our budget is here, like what we have allocated for this available?
We have to spend forty five thousand by June thirty first. So some of that money is going to the Holton Street, and I believe, Brian, that's like fifteen K, something like that.
Seems like we'll be able to get about fifteen K spent for Holton Street by June thirtieth, only because there is no June thirty first. And so, yeah, so although we have forty five thousand, it's 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 unlikely we'd be able that there's enough time to spend all that. But I would, I would say something like fifteen is seems to be that that that's probably the amount of time that we have left. About fifteen thousand dollars, meaning over the next several months, we could probably spend fifteen on this project.
So is is your current concern, Kurt, that we don't have enough?
I I was just comparing because the 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 scope of work and the costs across the three proposals are definitely quite different. And so I was just wondering, I wanted to think about how to factor that into our recommendation.
Right, so we we do have enough to 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 meet, to pay for all three of these. The question arises, what happens in our next fiscal year? How much do we want to spend there? And again, we are asking for How much do we want to spend there? And again, we are asking for, apparently, we're asking for forty-five thousand in our consult, consulting budget.
Well, technically, we asked for thirty. The manager gave us forty-five. It's unclear if FinCom will agree with that forty-five or will, or they'll, they'll say, no, we recommend thirty for the planning board. So just
That's true.
Nothing is in, nothing is there yet.
No, no eggs will be counted.
Correct.
I, I would just point out too that the, the fee in the gamble proposal was just for phase one. And phase one is a two-week phase, so that was fifteen thousand. So I, I don't know that it was clear to me what the cost of in the aggregate phase one, phase two, and phase three would be, but I would just assume each subsequent phase, since they're longer and more involved, would be in excess of fifteen thousand.
I think the whole project was, would probably be similar to doing the North Main Street, which what we do with MAPC, which was the equivalent in terms of money and technical assistance of close to thirty-five thousand dollars.
So I think that the Form and Place made a really good presentation and they took a very holistic view of all the steps to get there, not just how they would help us expend our budget this fiscal year. But they looked forward beyond that to say, how do we get through the goalpost with a successful vote?
Not really that, but they were such good communicators. I mean, ultimately, we're gonna have to communicate whatever we come up with to a town meeting. Um, they're, they struck me as having a vision, but also gave tons of specifics, which I didn't necessarily see in the others, uh, which were a lot of, you know, generalized, a little, little bit weaker on specifics. The visual presentation, I, I think is gonna be so important when we try to sell this.
Oh, Eching.
Yeah, I think that all three will be very competent. I, I've heard of David Gamble through just sort of the being in the field and, you know, he's, he's completely competent and very, very capable and his, his firm website has a lot of visuals. I don't think that anyone will be missing visuals in the end. I think that that would be the case. And I would just say that I think, you know, um, NA PC knows where we're at. We're getting more work perhaps for what we're paying for, so that, that is a, a plus. Um, you know, Gamble and Associates, he's, he's, I, I feel like all three of them were very competent communicators. I, I don't think that was, um, missing there. Um, Gamble Associates, you know, he's, I, he, he will be good. I think there, there are, I think that our fees are very low, and so I would, I would give a pass even being on the other side of it to know that, that, you know, be giving the presentation, how much work that is, that takes to present, that that, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't know. I don't know what was in their mindset there, but, um, I, I don't think that they'll be lacking in visuals. And, you know, Gamble is very cognizant of the process. He, he has had clients who are just like us. Um, and I do think that Form and Place were also very, very competent and, you know, I, I feel safe in all three of them, but, you know, I, I too would want to know what Gamble Associates, like, final fees would be. That's not clear here.
I don't know. He, he just didn't seem to, I mean, Form and Place, they, they want the work. I mean, they came with a presentation. Um, not that he doesn't want the work, but, I mean, at every step of the way, we're gonna be expecting a package. And I just was very impressed by the package I got. It seems like, you know, it's really something to think about. I didn't see Gamble. I, I liked him. I liked him, but he, he, and he had a lot of good, he had, he understood. I, I felt he spoke in generalities and was weak on specifics. And I think I might find that frustrating on kind of a working basis. Um, he was good. You know, I liked that he, he brought up the issue of densit- density in close proximity to intact neighborhoods, and this seemed like a nuance that, that I relate to. But overall, I didn't think that he was as strong on specific examples as I would have liked to have seen.
Um. One thing I noticed is, um, Form and Place actually said that they were really excited about the possibilities for this project. And, um, I don't know, maybe I just like to work with people who are excited about things that they're doing.
Well, just the presentation. I mean, they, they, they bothered to come up with something that was worth reading. Um, eh, eh, you know, yeah, I mean, it's nice to have someone that's really interested in doing the work. Uh, and is, you know, I think that's an important component to success. Um.
So, um, I just wanna get back to, does the board feel like they can make a decision this evening, or does the board, does anyone feel they need more time or more information to make a decision?
I would like to hear what you and Kurt, um, think about it.
Oh, I was trying to avoid that.
And Brian, too.
Um, so Kurt, go ahead.
All right, I mean, I, I sort of share a lot of Nick's feelings. I think you're sort of spot on. I mean, it seems like they want the work. Um, and they put a lot of time and effort into the presentation. I thought their communication style was more effective for me personally. You know, that isn't true for everyone necessarily, but I thought they were good. I'm, I, I do have the question about the cost all in for Gamble. I, I don't, I think the, providing us a cost for phase one and then provide.
Yeah, I think we can answer that for ourselves, as much as, you know, and nice to get the number, but I think it's pretty clear that it's, it's for two weeks of work.
So I, I, I'm wondering if there isn't an opportunity, though, to leverage MAPC? Because they, I think a couple of these groups talked about working in partnership with each other on other projects, and I'm, so I'm wondering if, you know, there's a way to stretch our budget and try and have MAPC work in tandem with Form and if we, if we want to go in that direction with one of these other groups, maybe it's, you know, Form and Place to try and leverage off MAPC's work and their experience and then take advantage of maybe the creativity and some of the design aspects that we saw from Form and Place with, like, you know, a partnership there.
I mean, I think that we can push for that and that, um, I would feel comfortable that the people at Form and Place would be receptive to any kind of a, a, a suggestion. Uh, I, I don't, I, I don't want to strap whoever we choose with, with having to, I guess, share the creative control, uh, but my sense is if we can save money, then, um, we can talk to them and, and feel like they'll listen and, and come up with a workable compromise if that's what we want to do.
To, to mention that, I, I don't, or to talk about that, I, I don't know if there'd be any cost savings. If anything, I think it potentially could be more, uh, to make them work together.
I, I, I think it would cost more. I'm just wondering if we end up with a better product because we could benefit from.
Yeah, no, I, I would agree with that. I, I, I just think that when, when you save fifteen, twenty thousand dollars to these consulting firms, it's, it's not a lot of money. Um, it, it really is not a lot of money, so and, and that's just part of the municipal budget that we have to deal with. Um, you know, we just, you know, we get about between thirty and forty-five thousand dollars a year to work on one or two projects, so um, I do think we would be able to get a better product. I just don't know. I haven't crunched those numbers that, but my, my, I'm being negative, put it that way. I, I'm not, the initial take is, I don't know how that's gonna work. Most likely, it might not.
Okay, I was just throwing it out there. Look, MAPC's total cost for his scope was ten thousand. And then going back to Form and Place, their total scope for everything through planning studies and implementation was thirty-three five. We might not get all the way through that by June.
No, no, we're not. So, so the way, so I guess let me explain a little bit about that is that their, their phases are broken up based upon our fiscal year. So the idea is that um, they, we told them, we're like, give us a, what can you do before June thirtieth? And then what is the total project? So basically, Gamble says that he could realistically get two to three weeks of work, you know, done before June. That, that's essentially what, what, what his proposal is saying, is that you can do, do that phase, what we're calling fa- whatever phase one might entail. It's between now and June thirtieth. Whatever, that, that's what, that's what that is. And that the cost of the entire project would take us into next fiscal year, and then maybe we'd use, you know, ten or fifteen now and then ten or fifteen after. So I, I, I actually think, so, um, MAPC very clearly gave us, this is everything that we can do before June thirtieth. Um, and then, and, and then so did Gamble, and Gamble basically says, I can give you eighty hours of work, uh, and this is what I can do in those eighty.
That's, that's helpful, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think it is, um, important to note that Form and Place took um, a long-range holistic view when they put their scope together. And, and, and that was partly at our instruction. Um, but they definitely didn't see it as, all right, this is what we can do for this amount of money and this amount of time. They said, this is what the project needs to be successful, and this is what we can bring to it, and how much it would cost us to do it. And it doesn't seem like an unreasonable amount of money.
No, I know it doesn't. I think it's telling that they had a long-term view in their proposal. Uh, you know, eh, eh, you know, I think that speaks to how they're gonna treat the project.
I also like the fact that they really do like to help, because, I mean, yeah, people can't previsualize things. Most people can't. Um, and so, and they have a, a nice hand for previsualizing things. I thought that was helpful to see.
So, so my perspective on this is that I think all three of them will probably come in just right around the same amount for the total project. I think it's gonna be fifteen K now and fifteen K later, and I think it'll all, we're not gonna, you know, there might be a five K difference between all of them, so I think this, we'll get the same amount of work out of them, and I think it'll be about the same. I like the fact that MAPC obviously knows what's going on in this corridor because they've done the, the initial condition study. I get better vibes from the Form and Place people. I just I get a sense of their not just their commitment to their process, but their engagement with the process. And, and so I, I have to admit, this is the second time I've spoken with Form and Place, so I have been exposed to their particular um, way of explaining things before. So I kind of am primed to, you know, because I, I, the previous discussions that I had with them was also positive, so that's, that's a bias. But I think that they do bring, um, a more holistic view of things. Um, I think unfortunately, uh, Gambling Associates was, I think, not as specific about this project. I like the, obviously, MAPC knew what was going on. Form and Place did take the time to look at the MAPC study. Uh, they went out and, you know, even if it was for a day, they actually went to North Main Street and took pictures. So I think that they, they are, they seem more hands-on. And I know that's probably not fair to Gambling Associates, but, you know, we've got twenty minutes to compare these folks. Um, so I would like, I'm with you, Kurt, in terms of, I would like to see MAPC and Form and Place, but I just think that logistically, it probably wouldn't work for such a small, a really tiny project, all told. I think that when they did work together, it was on larger things like master plans or CBDs where the product, it was just a much larger thing. So, um, I know I'm ready to make a decision this evening, and, um, if everyone else is ready, then we could go ahead, because everyone seems to be nodding. So I think what we can just do is everyone go around and name who it is they'd like to see as a consultant, and then whoever gets the most votes gets the job. So who would like to go first? Okay, Nick.
Uh, Form and Place, I think.
Uh, Kurt.
I think I would lean towards Form and Place, too. I, I will caveat and say, like, you, I know some members of the board here have worked with MAPC, and so I would say if there's a strong view based on our existing experience working with them, that they would actually be a great fit for this, then I would, I would happily defer to my, my board members who've worked with.
Okay, so that, that is a quantum vote. It exists both for Form and Place and MAPC at the same time. Um, Eching.
I really appreciate Josh's work and his understanding of the place and, um, but I do, I do feel like I, the, the visuals, the, the way of interacting with former place seems, um, might be more um, kind of boutique, almost. I, I, I think it'll, it'll be a nice, um, you know, uh, injection of life, I think, to the project.
Okay. So that's, that's a, a classical vote. It has exactly one state. Um, sorry, my physics background's coming out.
I like it. I like the yes for physics joke.
Uh, Sally.
I would, I would choose Form and Place for, for their visuals, for their holistic view, for their, um, uh, enthusiasm, um, and I, they just instill confidence in the long-range outcome of getting something that we can actually get through town meeting.
Um, and I think it's been, I, I also prefer Form and Place uh, with MAPC a very close second. Um, I really wish that we could have both of them working on it. Uh, but for all of the good things everyone said about Form and Place, that's, that's why I come in. So I think we, we have a, we have a decision this evening, and, uh, Brian, if you would go ahead and start the paperwork, let's see how, if we can get them working as soon as possible.
Very exciting. Also very exciting that it was, um, everyone's on the same page here. Um, so I, I think this is great, period.
And, and I do say, I do want, Form and Place made a point of really internalizing and really studying all the work that MAPC has done. I don't think that work is lost at all. I think that they're very much embracing the, the knowledge that was gained in that lengthy process.
Okay.
This is, this is great. This is all great news, so.
Yes, it is. Everything's great here. So, um, I would really welcome a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, roll call vote, please. Uh, Nick.
Aye.
Uh, Kurt.
Aye.
Eching.
Aye.
Sally.
Aye.
And Debs' eye as well. Uh, thank you all out there in TV land. Thank you for, uh, joining us this evening.
Good night, Richard.
Oh.
Richard Leaf, sing goodnight.
Oh, hi, Richard. Richard is our, is our, uh, is our observer from the, uh, the, not the Better Business, Chamber of Commerce.
Oh, great.
Chamber of Commerce. Um, so thank you, Nancy Pocari, Recording Secretary, extraordinary. Thank you, Brian Zukelli, Town Planner, extraordinary. Thank you to WinCam. Uh, thanks, Brian Mantor, Assistant Town Engineer, extraordinary. Everybody's extraordinary. Uh, we will see you all in two weeks. Take it easy, everyone. Have a great night.
Have a great night, everybody.